I hereby call the meeting to order. The time now is 7:07. Madam Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Nguyen.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yeah.
Councilwoman West, Fan West?
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Monzo?
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho?
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
So Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker today?
We do.
How many speakers sign up for, to speak tonight?
We currently have...
Alright, alright, okay. Alright, let's... I'm sorry. Alright, you give... You confused me now, I'm sorry about that. Alright, let's start all over again, I'm sorry. So I hereby reconvene the City Council meeting, the time now is 7:08 PM. Madam Clerk, please do the roll call again, please.
Mayor Nguyen?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Fan West?
Here.
Councilmember Monzo?
I'm here.
And Councilmember Ho?
Here.
Okay.
You have a call.
Thank you. Please stand, salute to the flag will be Councilmember Ho and the invocation will be by Councilwoman West.
Please follow my lead. Hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please join me in prayer. Lord, we just thank you so much that you allow us to have this meeting tonight to conduct city business. And Lord, as we hear the concerns of the resident in the city of Westminster, Lord, I pray that you give us ears and, and the heart to see what's going on. And Lord, I just pray for those who are hurting today, Lord, I pray that you will come for them, Lord, and I know that you are the God of all hope and all comfort. And so we thank you, we pray that you bless this time that we can do the city business in Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Guys, be seated.
Thank you, Councilmember Ho and Councilmember West for the salute to the flag and then invocation. Next is the City Attorney Close Session Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, we had two items on the closed session agenda. There was discussion on both of them. There was direction given, and there's nothing further to report.
Alright. Next is Export Communications, do we have any?
No.
Hearing none, seeing none, so moving on to City Clerk Report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a few announcements. We'd like to just remind everyone, a friendly reminder, that this is our last meeting on Zoom. So moving forward, we will continue to have in-person meetings. Also, that meetings will be beginning at 6:00 PM or sooner after with closed sessions as we do now. And that's going to be effective February 25th. Also, oral communications and public hearing time will be three minutes per speaker in accordance with the new ordinance that will soon become effective as well. And a friendly reminder, thanks to everyone who has already submitted applications for the City Commissions, Boards, and Committees. We're super excited about that, and we continue to welcome, there's still opportunities and vacancies available on the City Commissions and Boards which the Council will soon be considering. So we'd like to continue to invite everyone to please visit our website. You can see on the screen, we do have some of the information, the deadline is coming up tomorrow at 12 noon, so we look forward to receiving a few more applications. Thank you, and that concludes City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, City Clerk Report, please. I mean, I'm sorry, City Manager Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of the Westminster community. First off, we wanted to announce that on February 9th, the city and our community tragically lost retired OCFA Division Chief Ron Roberts. Chief Roberts last retired as the Division Chief for the cities of Los Alamos, the Los Alamos Joint Forces Training Base, Midway City, Rossmore Seal Beach, Garden Grove, and of course Westminster. He retired in October of 2022 after 42 years of service in the firefighter and community. He started off as a reserve in the city of Santa Ana before coming on to the Westminster Fire Department in 1981 as a full-time firefighter. And that was until the department became a part of OCFA in 1995. And so, you know, we're, we're very saddened by this tragedy, and our hearts and our thoughts and our prayers are with, with his family. And as soon as we find out more information about services for him, we'll make that announcement as well, but you know, we're, it's, it's profound reflect that on his service. You know, he began full-time with the city of Westminster, he ended his service with the city of Westminster doing what he loved, and so again, our hearts out to the Roberts family. In other news, so our Police Department Honor Guard was once again asked to participate in opening day ceremonies for the Challenger Little League Baseball League on Saturday, March 11th at Westminster Park. The Little League Challenger Divisions founded in 1989 and is Little League's adaptive baseball program for individuals with physical and intellectual challenges. Individuals with, with physical or intellectual challenge are able to participate, and the Police Honor Guard has been participating in the opening ceremonies for this league since 2013. I know members of the Council will also be there as well, and generally, there's a traditional pitch from the mayor for this event, so you know, members of the public are welcome to, to join us as we, you know, as we have the opening day ceremony for the Little League. So our Grocery Assistance Program, just wanted to give a little bit of an update on that. On February 10th, and then earlier today, we, we had intake, we had intake days for seniors 55 and older and veterans in our community who lined up and were eligible to receive hundred-dollar gift cards. Of course, there were some rules that went along with that, but we, on February 10th, which was an all-day event, we gave out 1,326 gift cards. And then today, in less than three hours, we gave out 732 gift cards. We gave a little bit over 2,000 gift cards to, to some of our, our, you know, vulnerable residents and those who, you know, those who needed it most, so I just want to thank staff that worked out there. We had staff from, you know, from all departments between the two days, working hours on end to make sure that, that, you know, our, our seniors and our residents were, were accommodated and, and comfortable as much as they possibly could. You know, unfortunately, February 10th ended up being the hottest day of the week, which we did not anticipate. But, you know, we, we made sure to get, you know, get snacks and water and, and seating just to ensure that, you know, that they were, were comfortable. And then, and we also want to thank Midway City Sanitary District as well for providing much-needed baseball caps to, to those who were standing in line, so you'll see photos with a sea of green baseball caps, so I want to thank them for that. And then, to, so yeah, so it was, it was ultimately a successful event. And, you know, I apologize for those who had to wait in line. We did the best that we possibly could, but, but again, it was successful, and we want to make sure, we want to thank Mayor Nguyen for, for bringing up the idea last year and the previous Council for, for supporting it, so. So again, super successful, we hope to have, you know, more events like these in the future. And then we just wanted to also announce that today we received a notification, so every, you know, every year we are responsible for, for, for an annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year. And just to kind of put our Finance Director on the spot, but we, we actually received a certificate of achievement for excellence in our, in financial reporting for our, for our CAFER that ended, fiscal year ending in June 30th, 2021, and so this is, you know, this is a, it's an achievement, it's a good award to get. And of course, we want to credit our Finance Director Erin Bax and her team for that. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, City Manager, for the detailed report there. And on behalf of the City Council as well as the staff, I would like to extend our condolences to Chief Robert. He was a dedicated chief for the number of years here at the city of Westminster before become OCFA member of OCFA. It's bad to hear the, you know, the bad news, but our thoughts and prayers be with his family. And I also, I would like to thank the volunteers who came out today and helped with the hundred-dollar gift certificate that make the line move quickly as a report from, from the City Clerk. Thank you, those who lend their hands and help out with the process. So now, we are going to, next is, we'll go to oral communication, and City Clerk, please read the instruction into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding any items on the agenda or non-agenda items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction, except public hearing items. Members of the public wishing to address public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the City Council, comments shall be limited to five minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the City Council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to City Council chambers and submit the card to me. When your name is called, please step forward to the podium and at that time state your name, city of residence, which is optional for the record. Any person wishing to address the City Council via Zoom should press the raise your hand button, if you're using a telephone and have dialed in, press star nine to raise your hand. When your name is called, the city, I will enable your microphone and you may press the unmute button to unmute yourself. If calling from a telephone or cellphone, press star six on your dial pad to mute and unmute. Please state your name and city of residence, optional for the record.
May I ask how many speakers sign up for tonight?
At this point, we have 14 in person, and we have one hand currently raised on Zoom there.
Okay, based on last time, we have also 13 or 14 people sign up at the beginning, and then it ended up to like three hours. Again, I am motion for the three minutes reduced from five minutes to three minutes.
I second that.
Please go to the room.
Thank you, the motion was made by Mayor Nguyen, sent by Councilwoman Fan West. And that is Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
No.
Councilmember Ho?
No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-2.
Thank you. And before I open up for oral communication, again, I would like to remind everyone that we would like to hear all the inputs. And you are welcome. You are welcome to criticize our performance that you see, but please refrain from personal attack. And refrain from, you know, bullying, bullying, harassment, or intimidation at public meetings is absolutely unacceptable. And you know that also, we have students who follow the meeting for extra credit, and so I asked to refrain from using the profanity in the language so that we can, you know, we don't want to teach our kids to hear those kind of things that they don't want to hear, and, you know, their parents may get upset about it too. So hopefully that we refrain from using the profanity language. So now I can open up the oral communication, so go ahead and call the first speaker.
Thank you, Mayor, the first speaker is Nguyen Hung, followed by Deborah Mariscal.
Today, I will talk about Agenda Item 5.5 and, and that Mayor, Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen is selling goods online without a license or permit. I, Hung Nguyen, the undersigned here, a resident of District 4 of the city of Westminster. I'm writing this letter today to request that Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen and Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen, out of your self-respect, please resign at the earliest time possible. I'm speaking out today, in opposition to the proposal on Agenda Item 5.5 for the TET Parade that will be organized by the city. These cost us our tax money for a large amount for just a five-hour event. In addition to that, the recent parade does not reflect true Vietnamese culture other than the lion dance and burning of firecrackers. And not to mention the fact that the city violently federal political center by allowing the float to carry anti-Vietnam government slogans. Vietnam is a country that has established and normalized diplomatic relations with the US. So the TET Parade should be supposed to be a fun event during the Lunar New Year, celebrating the Lunar New Year. Nevertheless, at the beginning of this year, the city organized the parade to, to show political forces. You have violated federal security law as well as meddling in the established or diplomatic relation between the two countries, good diplomatic relation between the two countries. Not, not, not to mention that Vietnam is a very reliable, good reliable ally with the US and Asia. The city spent $150,000 to allow two groups, the Alliance of Vietnamese People by Chen Hu Nguyen and the Vietnam Reformed Revolutionary Party to show their strength and force. All this being sponsored by the city. Both of the organizations were condemned by the Vietnamese government as a terrorist organization. Most recently, the Alliance of Vietnamese People of, had five of their members arrested and prosecuted and sentenced from eight to five years, eight to 15 years. I have linked to this website to, to, to tell, to show people what I'm talking about. Why are we talking about the Alliance of Vietnamese People? I have questions for Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen, Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen, and Attorney Lan Quat Nguyen, the director of the Garden Grove Unified School District for their award of a certificate of commendation to Chen Hu Nguyen. Is there a plan to join forces with these people, or are you guys members of the Alliance of Vietnamese People? Please inform us whether the city knew about this certificate of commendation and whether you are a member of this organization.
The next speaker is Deborah Mariscal, followed by Han Pham.
I shall. Use your notes. Deborah Mariscal, Westminster, since 2... Will you start me over again, please? Deborah Mariscal, Westminster, since 2000.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Clerks, Attorney, Police Department. Congratulations to the Westminster Police Department for cleaning up Liberty Park and empty lot on beach and 21st. Four days with no new encampments, it's a miracle! I don't know where they are, I don't know what you did with them. I'm hoping that they got the help that they need. I get extra seconds for that. Okay, so I started paying attention to our City Council meetings probably about the time that the jail was rebuilt, so around 15 years ago. Prior to that, I lived in Garden Grove for 11 years. And based on how our council meetings have been over the last five-plus years, including the new members this, this council time, I decided that I wanted to watch some other cities' council meetings to see what they were like, so I watched a couple of Garden Grove meetings. They have several ethnic groups. They're respectful to each other. And they get stuff done in a couple of hours. Imagine that! I would encourage our current City Council to look at some other cities' council meetings, take some notes, and do the same, so we're not here until 1 or 2 o'clock in the morning. TET Parade. It is really nice that that was pulled off, and the city did a really good job on that. Probably helped some of the businesses in that area. However, it looks like we took about $100,000 hit on that in a time where we are already short funds. I hope that we don't continue to put ourselves in that hole. That $100,000 could have given us another police officer. Or imagine that could have given us a Zoom subscription for three or four years so that people that are unable to attend could say what they want to say in public, in, in the public comments. Some of us residents have children. Some have medical issues that prevent them from being able to attend, if they have cancer, they can't be, they can't be around someplace where they could pick something up. For me, I travel for my job, so I can't always be here. And now, I'm prohibited from speaking because we're no longer to have, having Zoom. Now, I know we all want to go home early, but how dare you? How dare you reduce the amount of time from five minutes to three? Totally unacceptable! Now, if you have skeletons in your closet, and you know it, if you're a public servant, those are going to come out, and you have to expect it. So I'm taking the log out of my eye, take the splinter out of yours.
The next speaker is Han Pham, followed by Du An Pham.
Please proceed to comment.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the entire City Council, as well as our City Attorney. I'm here this evening, because I have a few things that I would like to share. First of all, I sincerely, I would like to sincerely commend the organizer, city staff, for the 2023 TET Parade. Especially Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen and Councilmember Amy Fang West. That was the first time that I was able to see a parade that were organized and held in accordance with Vietnamese culture and tradition. I hope that the, the parades for the following year would be better. I would like to thank the City Council, or especially, I highly value Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen, Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen, and City Councilmember Amy Fang West for fighting for the right of our residents. The three of you has, had voted to restart the grocery group program, grocery gift card program for the resident of the city of Westminster. And based on, and answering the call by Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen as well as Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen, I saw that there was a lot of volunteer who came to help the resident to complete the painful work of the grocery gift card. The three of you just got elected, and you have done a lot of good deed for our city, for our residents. I, and the resident of the city of Westminster, trust you, the three of you, and we will continue to support you. I hope that the City Council would continue to have a program helping people with their housing, medical, healthcare for senior, senior citizens, as well as people with low income. for senior citizens, as well as people with low income.
Tôi đồng ý và ủng hộ 100% việc rút ngắn thời gian đóng góp ý kiến của các cư dân từ 5 phút xuống còn 3 phút.
I agree and 100% support, totally support the reducing of the speaking time from 5 to 3 minutes.
Tôi tán thành quý vị đã bỏ phiếu xóa bỏ nghị quyết về fake news do ban nghị viên Kat Lo Man Zhou, Kim Lee Hò và Thùy Đỗ đã sảng ra. Bởi vì chính cái nghị quyết đó toàn là fake news thôi.
And I agree with you for voting to remove the resolution denouncing fake news that were voted or sponsored by Councilmember Kimberly Hall, Carlos Manzou, and Thùy Đỗ. Because that resolution itself is fake news.
Đặc biệt đối với những cư dân xuất hiện vào những buổi họp thành phố Westminster chỉ đưa ra những lời dối trá bị đặt, thì tôi xin quý vị hãy xem đó là những màng hài kịch.
So especially with respect to the resident who would attend the city council meeting and they would share, they would go up here and lie, please, please view that as political or political or just a comedy, comedy theater.
Và cuối cùng, chị nghị viên Kim Lee Hò, cô đã tự mình tuyên bố trên phương tiện truyền thông bằng tiếng Việt và cả tiếng Anh. Cô tự mình tuyên bố là mình sẽ từ chức nghị viên thành phố Westminster nếu mà cô không thắng cử vào chức thị trưởng thành phố Westminster. Và thực tế là cô đã thất bại. Thế thì bây giờ, là một nghị viên của thành phố, nói được là làm được. Cô hãy thực hiện lời hứa của mình trước cư dân thành phố, trước cư dân thành phố Westminster đi.
As to city councilmember Kimberly Hall, you yourself announced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Don Phong.
Chào tôi Động Phương. Đến đây trước nhất tôi kính chào các cấp ở địa phương và kính chào quý ông bà, cô bác, anh chị em có mặt hiện diện ngày hôm nay.
First of all, I would like to say hello to everyone here tonight.
Dạ kính thưa ạ! Người Việt Nam có một số tỷ nạn cộng sản và có một số hôn thuê hôn vu và bảo lãnh. Thì qua đây, mấy anh và mấy chị từ 50 mấy tới 60 mà được vào tổ chức và lãnh đạo của quận Cam này thì tôi hết chứ là hâm hận.
First of all, we Vietnamese came here mostly on two, under two programs. Either we came here as a refugee or we came here under the spousal petition. And, and, and you know, for those who came here, who are now 50 and 60, and they are leader or they have position within our government at the local level here, I, I, I respect you.
Nhưng không biết nguyên nhân nào, từ ngài quý anh, quý chị được đại diện cho dân tộc Việt Nam ở cái quận Cam này thì sau một thời gian dài tháng thì có cái sự tranh chấp lẫn nhau, hết việc này tới việc khác. Điều đó tôi thấy hết chứ là tuổi nhục.
I don't know what happened, I don't know what brought this about, but after you've been in office for a few months, you then would fight each other, you have internal fighting from one issue to the next. And I, I'm ashamed of that.
Nếu quý anh chị đã được người dân bỏ phiếu thì quý vị phải thấy là làm sao Trung Quốc thới dân ăn và lo cho dân, lo cho nước, lo cho đất nước Hoa Kỳ, điều đó mới là đúng. Còn nếu đánh phá lẫn nhau, đó là một điều sĩ nhục.
So if you were elected by the people, then you should do everything to bring prosperity to the city and also the country. Instead of fighting each other, again, I'm ashamed of that.
Dạ thưa ạ! Tôi là một người dân ở quận Cam này. Về chính trị thì tôi không được rõ lắm, nhưng tôi thấy là, tôi thấy là nếu là quang nhất thời, dân dạng đại, vui cho ở tại ngủ hay ở tại ngủ thì để cho dân chúng tôi tôn trọng và kính phục. Chứ không, nếu mà, 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 mà làm không đúng, chúng tôi cũng không thể nói gì được. Nhưng mà đó là một sĩ nhục cho một người mà, mà, mà lãnh đạo ở trong cái quận Cam này mà đám đá lẫn nhau, điều đó chúng tôi không muốn.
I am a resident of Orange County and I'm not well versed in politics. However...
Nhưng mà, mà, mà tôi không muốn cho cái việc đánh phá lẫn nhau.
But, but I do not want you to, to fight, to have this internal fighting because that would bring shame to the city and also bring shame to you yourself as our leader.
Nếu quý vị không có đại diện được chúng tôi thì xin quý vị đừng làm phiền chúng tôi. Quý vị nên nhớ là quang nhất thời, dân dạng đại, vui còn ở tại ngủ hay là súc ngủ để cho chúng tôi tôn trọng, chứ đừng gì tư riêng, hay là quyền lợi mà làm cho chúng tôi buồn phiền. Đó là một điều rất là trơ tráng.
So whether you are currently holding office or not, do not do things just for your personal interest or your group's interest because that, that is just shameful and...
Dạ kính thưa ạ! Nếu quý vị đại diện được chúng tôi thì quý vị nên phải có sự liên kết lẫn nhau và yêu thương lẫn nhau, đùng bọc lẫn nhau để rồi mới lo được cho chúng tôi. Mà nếu quý vị lo được chúng tôi thì ở đất nước Hoa Kỳ này, mình mới có mới ngưỡng mặt lên chứ còn chúng ta là dân tộc Việt Nam mà qua đây còn đánh phá lẫn nhau thì chính quyền Hoa Kỳ và các chúng tộc khác người ta xem thường mình lắm.
So if you want to truly represent us, then you should work with each other. Instead of infighting, you should do good for the city, for the community, so that we Vietnamese could be proud, otherwise people would look down on us.
Michael Verenchi, followed by Hugh Doomedel.
Good evening. Nice to see cowardice as alive and well in the city council chambers with you three. I cannot believe this. Alright, Agenda Item 5.4. When I was on the school board for eight years, every single member of that school board had the opportunity to place something on the agenda as long as it got in there in plenty of time to make the printed agenda and to be put out. The only reason this thing is on here with two members is for you guys to control who gets to put stuff on there. And then you let the king sitting up in the middle here put whatever he wants to on the agenda. And then you wonder why people come here to complain about you. 5.5, the Tet Parade. Does this mean you're going to make it a city-run opportunity? And we're going to be dumping money in a black hole here? I saw the check register and the $100,000. If we were financially soluble, hey, that'd be perfect. Let the city run the thing and bring in a whole bunch of money from some of the businesses around here. We have so many businesses that support this thing, that'd be nice. Hundred bucks here, hundred bucks there, pretty soon, you're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars. Nam Quan. You sent a letter to a developer in this city wanting to know why he doesn't fly the flag of a country that no longer exists. That's his prerogative. He's a private citizen. Are you trying to strong-arm him? Because by doing things like this, you're walking a very thin line there. And if this gentleman starts to understand that you're going to bring pressure down on here as business by not flying the South Vietnamese flag there, you're going to find yourself at the backside of a DA's investigation. So you need to pay attention to what you're doing because that'll come back and bite you on the backside. And it's not a lot of fun having to sit in the DA's office and have them question you about your methods. Right? Keep it up here. Amy, you've used the city seal twice during the, yeah, that's it, smile about it during the campaign and also this little meet and greet that you had. That's okay, you can be cocky about it because these other two guys are never going to say anything to you either. Alright, I know that. At least get the directions to your church correct because that might have been a little embarrassing, people driving around trying to find out where they're supposed to go because you forgot where you went to church. But the cowardice, I'm cutting the time down again. And I'm looking at Charlie here, closing his eyes, kind of zoning out, going bye.
Hugh Doomedel.
Charlie Nguyễn Mạnh Chí, phó thị trưởng Nam Quan Nguyễn, cùng các nghị viên hội đồng thành phố Westminster.
Good evening, Mayor Charlie Chi Nguyen, Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen, and the entire city council member.
Tôi tên là Ngọc Huệ, cư ngủ tại Westminster, địa hạt ba. Hôm nay tôi lên đây để nói lên những gì tôi thấy và nghe.
I am, my name is Ngọc Huệ. I am a resident of District 3 of the city of Westminster. I'm here tonight to share things that I saw and heard.
Vì tôi theo dõi mỗi kỳ họp của thành phố, tôi thấy có những người lên đây phát biểu không giúp ích gì mà chỉ có ganh ghét thù cá nhân đem đời từ những dân cử được bầu lên mà họ không ưa thích.
I follow the city council meeting each time it was held. And I saw that there were people coming up here to speak. They did not do anything to help the city. Instead, they did it out of personal hatred. They want to carry out their vendetta and they want to invade big things of the private life, well, invade the private life of our elected official.
Nói không sự thật làm mất thì giờ tốn kém tiền thuế của cư dân Westminster.
They didn't tell you the truth. They waste city's time, our tax money, tax money of the resident of the city.
Tôi nghĩ những người chỉ đánh phá, làm bất an cho thành phố và cũng không có quyền kêu ai phải từ chức. Các người lúc nào cũng xưng danh là ông này bà nọ mà không ý thức được những gì mình đang nói.
I think those people up here attacking our city official, they here to cause problem. They do not have any right to demand anyone to resign. You always say, I'm this person and that person, but you do not, you don't know what you are doing or what you're saying.
Những dân cử được dân cư Westminster dùng lá phiếu của họ bầu lên thì chỉ có những lá phiếu đó được đem họ xuống nếu không làm việc như đã hứa.
Our elected official was voted in by the vote of the people. So only the vote of the people can bring them down or can remove them if they do not do things as they have promised.
Tôi là dân cư của thành phố Westminster, yêu cầu các người đừng lên đây để làm xấu mặt các người.
I'm a resident of the city of Westminster. I'm asking that you do not come up here to bring shame to yourself.
Để người bản xứ chê của cộng đồng Việt Nam của chúng ta, chúng ta hãy thương yêu nhau, đoàn kết và xây dựng mỗi ngày càng tốt đẹp hơn.
So that the native citizens of this city would laugh as our community. I want you to love each other, to unite it so that we could build the community and the city and make it better.
Đem sự hiểu biết của quý vị góp ý kiến cho những người ta, cho những người đại diện cho chúng ta để phát triển cho thành phố và nơi chúng ta đang ở.
So use your knowledge to contribute, to share your idea to our elected officials so that they could develop the city to make the city better, the city in which we live.
Còn nghị viên Kim Lee Hò, bà nói là nếu không đắp cử vào thị trưởng thì sẽ từ chức. Sao bà không giữ lời hứa khi bà đã tuyên bố?
As to city councilmember Kimberly Hall, you said that you would resign if you do not got elected to be the city mayor. Why haven't you resigned as you have promised?
Vì tôi thấy bà ngồi đó không làm được gì cho thành phố và cư dân cả.
I see that you're sitting up there, but you're not doing anything for the residents or the city.
Bà chỉ đem lại những phiền toái và bất ổn.
You just bring trouble onto the city.
Tôi yêu cầu bà làm những gì bà đã hứa.
So I'm going to ask you to carry out your promise.
Lời hứa là danh dự.
Promise, well, keeping your promise, do it all, I think, keep your promise.
Và sau cùng tôi yêu cầu những quý vị đừng lạm dụng tôn trọng tự ngôn lệnh.
Last of all, I would like to request that you respect freedom of speech.
Nói sự thật, có ý xây dựng.
And speak the true... Speak the true and also speak positively.
Cảm ơn quý vị đã lắng nghe.
Thank you for listening.
The next speaker is Gigi Voe, followed by Duke Ben.
Tôi tên là Gigi Voe, là một cư dân trong quận Hạt.
My name is Gigi Voe. I'm a resident of this county.
Kính chào ông thị trưởng Trạch Liên Nguyễn Mạnh Chí và các nghị viên.
Good evening, Mayor Charlie Chi Nguyen and the entire city council.
Hai thành viên của Tam Nhân Ban còn lại, không ai khác là Kim Lee Hò và Kat Lo Manzou.
The two remaining members of the gang of three, no other than, no one other than Kimberly Hall and Carlos Manzou.
Hai kẻ đã phá nát cộng đồng Việt Nam trên ban hội đồng thành phố Westminster.
These are the two that had destroyed the Vietnamese community by sitting on the city council of the city of Westminster.
Hai người này là những kẻ đậu giả, phát biểu liếu láo và nói sai rất nhiều chuyện.
These two are hypocrites. They telling lies on a lot of things.
Họ không cần biết về sự thật và sự liêm sĩ của con người.
They do not care for the truth or self-respect.
Họ đã gây ra biết bao nhiêu xấu trộn trong thành phố. Từ ngài họ xây 180 độ vào năm 2021 khi họ giật sập tượng đài tái chiếm cổ thành quản trị.
They have served a lot of trouble, causing a lot of problems for the city when they turn around or hurt the great to, well, when they turn around in 2021 and took down the country monument.
Hai người này tập hợp chỉ vì thù ghét cá nhân.
These two people, they came together just because of personal vendetta.
Ganh Tị, ông thị trưởng, phó thị trưởng Nam Quan và nghị viên Amy Phan Quet. Ganh tỵ ông thị trưởng, phó thị trưởng Nam Quan và nghị viên ME Fan West.
Personal vendetta and also jealousy against...
Họ không còn đường đi nữa ngoài việc phá hoại và cản trở công việc của thành phố.
They have nothing else to do or they have no more political hat to travel other than to destroy the city and to interfere in the work of the city.
Bà Hồ, bà Hồ mà không từ chức như đã hứa nhiều lần thì bà này thật là một cái lõi nhổ ra mà liếm lại.
So if Ms. Hall does not resign as she has repeatedly promised, then she should be, then there should be the type that would make promises but, you know, would not keep their promise.
Bà là một người đàn bà quá tráo trở, hết thuốc chữa.
You are a devious woman that does nothing that we could do about you anymore.
Còn cái ông Manzô này cũng hết thuốc chữa luôn.
And Mr. Manzô here does not much we could do about him either.
Ông Manzô rất là hàm hồ và ăn nói thật trịch thường.
Mr. Manzô is not careful with his word and he speaks heartily.
Xem thường cộng đồng Việt Nam.
He looked down on the Vietnamese community.
Miễn thì nói đoàn kết nhưng ông này chỉ có giấu tai với hầu hết những dự luật hoặc hành động chia rẽ trong Westminster.
He talked about unity. Why, you know, why he had a hand in all these resolutions or ordinance to cause division within the city of Westminster?
Từ việc giật sập tướng đài tái chiếm cổ thành quản trị một, đến góp tai vào những nghị quyết lên án vô căn cứ ông Trạch viên Nguyễn và Trí Tạ.
Such as the take down of the first country monument as well as contributing to the resolution, the basis for resolution to denounce Charlie Ching Nguyen and Trí Tạ.
Mặt nạ của Manzô đã rơi xuống rồi và mặt thật không có được đẹp tí nào.
Yeah, Mr. Manzô, your mask has come up and your true face, it doesn't look too good.
Ông nên tự thú và nhận những tội lỗi mà ông đã làm hại đến cộng đồng chúng tôi.
Please admit that you have done things that were bad or negative for our community.
Xin cảm ơn và xin trân trọng kính chào.
Thank you and good night.
The next speaker is Duke Van.
Người cái phát biểu là an Đức bang.
Kính chào thị trưởng, phó thị trưởng, các quý vị hôm nay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and everyone here tonight.
Tôi đến đây gửi lần thứ hai. Tôi... Để đóng góp, cái người nói chuyện vừa qua là Nguyễn Phương Hùng.
My, well, this is my second time attending city council meeting. And I would like to say a few things about the previous speaker, Mr. Hong Phun Nguyen.
Thưa quý vị, cộng đồng của chúng ta, những người dân cử ở đây, người ta đã chọn lựa một người có tài, có đức ra để mà giúp đỡ cho người dân ở nơi này.
So, as you can see, the people have elected our official, our elected official here, elected representative to represent the people of the city. They are qualified.
Tôi là tỷ nạn chính trị. Tôi qua đây là người Mỹ đã cùng mang tôi trong khoảng thời gian mấy chục năm. Tôi rất là mừng. Cho nên cái những người mà phản bác là hoàn toàn là cái thằng cộng sản đưa qua đây để phá hoại cái nền tự do.
I am a worker for refugees that I was taken in by this country and for that I'm forever grateful. But I can see that the people who went up here and attacked our city officials, they were probably sent by the communist government to attack our freedom.
Tôi mong quý vị chú ý những cái người này. Mỗi khi cộng đồng người Việt của chúng ta hoạt động ở nơi này thì họ lấy những cái bằng chứng, họ chụp ảnh, họ gửi về Việt Nam. Những người Việt Nam về thăm quê hương, họ... Cộng sản nó khủng bố rất là nhiều người.
So as you can see, those people that were up here, they would take photo and video of our community over here and they would send it to the communist government in Vietnam. And based on that, the government in Vietnam would cause a lot of trouble for our people, the people that were in the video.
Cái người nói vừa qua, Nguyễn Trường Hùng đã tuyên, cộng sản đã tuyên, đã... Đã đã tặng cho cái bằng khen mà quý vị nên chú ý những người này.
So the person who spoke earlier, Mr. Hong Phun Nguyen, he was commanded, he was granted a certificate of commendation by the communist government. So please be careful with that person.
Okay, trước hết, chúc mừng, tăng thị trưởng, phó thị trưởng.
So I would like to congratulate our new mayor and vice mayor. And that's it.
The next speaker is Tony Buie, followed by Linh Nguyen.
Good evening, Mayor Charlie Ching Nguyen, Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen, Councilmember Alan West, Councilmembers Charlotte Manzô and Councilmember Kimberly Hall and all staff of the city of Westminster, especially the police department who has spent a lot of time to keep our meeting in order. Thank you for... And last, two weeks ago, we have the Valentine Day. So I would like to present a little gift to the Secretary, Abigail, who has helped me a lot. You are working hard for all of us. However, there was one person who hardly working, that is Ms. Kimberly Hall. In the past two weeks, she keep going on the mainstream media. She ran the time, "Please design me" that I am a venger to her. "No, I used to support you from the first moment, but then you betray all of us." That's why we come here to say to you that Kimberly Hall of Westminster has four features: liars, libel, lame brain, and leeches. Lame brain, that mean crazy and idiot. And leeches, that mean the people who suck on the blood of the people of Westminster. So I would like to show you, all of you, the keep on showing the true that how Kimberly Hall had betrayed us and she has tried very hard. She want to resign, but she couldn't do it because she's chicken die and she stick to her chair. Kimberly Hall, you should go in with what you talk to the people. Okay? Here is what. Did you see the drill pictures of you?
That's November 8, 2022. I will remove myself from the city council.
I will remove myself from city of council if I do not win this seat of mayor. You should do that, Kimberly Hall. Otherwise, I keep remind people of city of Westminster that you are a liar. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Linh Nguyen.
Lee, my apologies. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lee Nguyen. I'd like to read the Vietnamese part first, like usual.
Nếu quý vị cho chúng tôi thấy quý vị là những người có khả năng và tư cách để đại diện cho chúng tôi thì mọi người đều rất biết ơn quý vị. Nhưng quý vị chỉ đưa những thành phần vô đạo đức và thênh cộc vào hội đồng thành phố để áp dụng chính sách của Việt Cộng, nên người dân mới tới đây để chống đối.
If you guys are doing a good job as a council member to represent us, we absolutely appreciate that. However, you brought into the city someone with all the disgusting personalities and wrongdoings. That's why people come here to have their voice and speak about it.
Quý vị đừng dùng cái thủ đoạn rẻ tiền dơ bẩn là mến đồng chí của quý vị tới đây để binh vực và đánh bóng quý vị. Chuyện này quý vị đã từng làm trong quá khứ. Chúng tôi không có gì thấy có gì lạ cả. Chúng tôi đề nghị quý vị nên mến những người nào có tư cách, có giáo dục, có văn hóa để tới đây binh vực quý vị và nịnh hót quý vị. Vì nếu không, quý vị sẽ tự sĩ nhục mình và làm nhục cho người Việt Nam khác.
Don't ever use the dirty tricks as pain for your comrades to show up here to defend and kiss up to you. This tactic has been done in the past, nothing new to us. We suggest that you guys should hire someone with class, dignity, and presentability. Otherwise, you just humiliate yourselves and all other Vietnamese.
Những người lính Việt Nam cộng hòa đã hy sinh siêu máu và bản sống của họ cho quý vị và gia đình của quý vị được sống sung túc ở miền đất tự do này, hầu hết họ không còn sống nữa. Còn những người sống sót sau khi bị Việt Cộng cầm tù tra tấn, giã man bây giờ được sang đây, họ muốn lưu lại một chính tích hào hùng của quân đội Việt Nam cộng hòa nơi đất khách quê người. Quý vị không cho phép họ làm điều này mà lại làm theo đơn đặt hàng của tù Việt Cộng ở trong nước. Quý vị là những người biết cầm chén cơm lên biệt ăn mà sao quý vị lại có thể làm được những chuyện phụ tay phản bộ lại dân tộc và cha ông của mình như vậy? Cha mẹ quý vị có dạy quý vị thế nào là lương tâm và đạo đức con người không? Chúng tôi muốn nói tới việc xây dựng cái cổ thành quản trị. Lương tâm và đạo đức của quý vị, liệt cái chó ăn hết rồi hả? Bản thân và gia đình của quý vị sẽ nhận lãnh những gì bất hạnh xấu xa nhất do những việc làm tán tật lương tâm của quý vị đó, cứ chờ đi.
Please. Please.
South Vietnam soldiers who shed their blood and sacrificed their lives for you and your family to enjoy freedom and safety in this country, most of them no longer exist. Those who survived have all suffered some communist brutal and revengeful torture. They were rescued to come here. They wish for their lives to signify patriotic and heroism for South Vietnam troops. This is the place they adopt as their own country. For some reason, you don't let them do it. You always want to do what communist Vietnam ordered you to do. We are talking about Quang Tri monument. Are you even a human being? How could you dare to betray your fellow Vietnamese and country? Did your parents ever teach you about human morality, conscience, and ethics? Your family and yourself will definitely get all the worst karma from your devil intentions one day. Thank you.
The next speaker is Westminster Watchdog, followed by Kit Hun.
Good evening. Thank you Christine for honoring my request to have Deputy City Attorney Collins provide the same social media presentation that he gave to Placentia's Council last month, item 5.1. Our new council members attended the League of California Cities Conference last month where the topic was covered extensively, but Amy and Nam Quan did not comprehend it, so pay attention this time. At the Strategic Plan Workshop, item 5.2, I identified three functions that need to improve customer service. I also told the city manager, "We need a full-time employee at the lobby's front desk", and have repeatedly requested a monthly report of active development projects and permits be published, but staff can't figure out how to do it within our gov. I am pleased my requests are reflected in these objectives. Item 5.4, I sent two emails concerning the city attorney, mayor, and staff violating agenda policy approved on January 11th, yet they violated it again tonight with item 5.5. The city attorney tried to justify the first violation, saying the mayor insisted, and besides, it's typical, then backpedaled, saying he personally obtained a verbal approval from Vice Mayor Nguyen to add item 5.6 on the last agenda. Since when is it legal to modify adopted policy based on the city attorney's erroneous assumptions behind closed doors because the mayor demands it? The city is hell-bent on violating law and policy, and residents will not tolerate this crap anymore. I support the tep parade being a city event, item 5.5, but with conditions. Staff must explain why the gross cost was $50,000 over budget even though the net cost to the city was $50,000 under budget because revenue was not budgeted. Four council member call rounds at 585 each, where is the VIP seating revenue? No entry fee should be waived, period. The goal must be zero cost to the taxpayers. This parade was more professional, better organized, and less political than one's previous organized privately. Nam Quan, your 10-minute, two-part speech at the last meeting attacking council members of the public for their comments was grossly inappropriate, and the city attorney and mayor were wrong to allow it. You three had better stop trying to censor us through intimidation and threats. A detailed complaint about that meeting is forthcoming. Your letter to Frank Zhao on official letterhead with the city seal pressuring him to fly the flag of South Vietnam at Asian Garden Mall is wrong on so many levels: intimidation under color of authority. Amy, at your event on Friday, you were chatting, giggling, and flirting, like you do with Christian here, with public safety officers while Commander McCormick was speaking. You displayed the draft mock-up flyer with the city seal on two big screens even though you were explicitly told not to. And when asked about it, you claimed you can use it because Andrew Dode has... huh? You already served a cease and desist letter for violating this city ordinance. Violating law is your thing. When asked about bickering on the dais, you declared "not me", bullshit. Your attacks on council members Manzô and Ho prove it. Your behavior is abhorrent. You are an embarrassment to our city and to women everywhere. You will be held accountable, you can bank on that. I provided you all copies of two key pages of the city's Code of Ethics and Conduct concerning your conduct with each other and the public. Read, comprehend, follow, or else. And Amy, I listened to your communist escape story for the umpteenth time, and I wonder, why does your voter registration state that you were born in the United States with no state listed? Not Vietnam. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kit Nguyen.
Kính thưa ông thị trưởng, ông phó thị trưởng và các nghị viên, ông bà nghị viên và luật sư đại diễn cho thành phố Westminster và các vị cảnh sát, các cô thực kê, tôi là Vinh Kiếp, là người cư dân của thành phố Westminster.
Good evening to Mayor, Vice Mayor, the entire city council member, our city attorney, our police chief, and the entire city staff. My name is Kit Nguyen. I am a resident of the city of Westminster.
First, in God, we trust. Tôi ngày hôm nay muốn cho thành phố Westminster có sự yên bình, có một cái peace, có một cái freedom. Và ngày hôm nay là ngày chúa. Chúng ta nếu người công giáo ăn chay, thiêng thịt, những tội lỗi, những cái gì đó, hãy quay lại với cái hướng lý tưởng đúng của một con người, một cái lý tưởng đúng của một người tỷ nạn.
So I want the city to... I want peace to come back to the city. I want the city to enjoy its freedoms again. If you're Catholic today, it's the start of Lent season and also a day to look back and to repent.
Kính thưa quý vị, kính thưa cô Kimberly Hồ, tôi là một vua nhân của miền Nam Việt Nam và tôi rất quý trọng... Và tôi rất quý trọng thành phố của cô. Là một commander của người miền Nam Việt Nam. Chúng ta là một cái lý tưởng chính nghĩa, không cộng sản.
So to everyone, especially council member Kim Lee Ho, I am a... I serve in the South Vietnamese Army, and I highly respect your father, former commander, because they fought for democracy and they fought for the right to.
Thật sự tôi cũng không muốn tới cái thành phố để mà nghe quý vị bàn họp hay là những cái tiếng truyền, cái phát triển của thành phố. Tôi rất vui mừng, tôi rất vui mừng. Tuy nhiên, cái vừa qua thì tôi có mặt, tôi có hơi nặng lời với cô. Là về thái độ của cô và hành động của cô. Tôi đã hành vi, tôi đi từ nam xuống bắc, từ đông xuống tây. Tôi có mấy chục thành phố chưa bao giờ tôi thấy thành phố Westminster. Luật sư, Andy Phan Huynh, ông này người Mỹ, ông thị trưởng Hồ Nguyễn, ông phó thị trưởng Hồ Nguyễn và cô cũng hồ, người chứng án. Tôi đã hành vi, tôi đã xung hướn. Tuy nhiên...
At the last meeting, I kind of criticize you heavily. Well, I've been to a lot of cities. I have never seen any city like this. We have our city attorney, our city council member Amy Phan West, our city council member of Mexican descent, the mayor, Charlie Chin Nguyen, Vice Mayor Nam Anh Nguyen, and city council member Kim Lee Ho.
Tuy nhiên, hôm nay lần thứ ba chắc có lẽ tôi cũng không thể giờ để tới những lần sau, nhưng mà hôm nay tôi mới nói cho quý vị, cả người Mỹ, người Mỹ và người Việt Nam chúng ta biết, nước Mỹ không bao giờ đồng ý chấp nhận và hợp tác với cộng sản.
So this is my third time here, and I would, I think this would be my last. I might not be able to attend the next meetings. But I want to say that this country here, America, we would never accept communism.
Last time, chính những tai sai của bà Kim Lee Hồ là những người cộng sản áo đỏ sao vàng. Là những tai sai, là những tên Pháp Bùi và những tên tài đổ đã đổi thành phố Westminster là thành phố Hồ Chí Minh. Chúng tôi phản lộ và chúng tôi mới lên án bà, do đó hôm nay yêu cầu bà stop, stop, stop và cùng nhau bắt tay để làm việc xây dựng thành phố Westminster, tiến triển hơn và phát mạnh và hòa bình.
So your councilwoman Ho, your latchkey that were up here, they communist. They, 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 the one that worship the red banner and yellow star. And then you have Fat Buoi and Kaido who want to change the name of the city from Westminster to Ho Chi Minh City. You, our councilmember Kim Lee Ho, please, please stop and work together to make the city better.
And the last, tôi muốn nói nhân mạnh một số người.
And last of all, I would like to mention a few names.
Những buổi minh tinh của thành phố, của thị trưởng, của luật sư đại diễn cho tòa án, đại diễn cho luật và những thị trưởng, phó thị trưởng và nghị viên đại diễn cho đồng bào. Tại sao sau lưng quý vị có những hai TV để quay những hình ảnh đẹp và những người đẹp? Mà lại có một số những người, tôi biết Mỹ hay Mỹ không chống đối và ông nghĩ gì bà Kim Lee Hồ? Không chống đối ông Nam Quan, không chống đối đại tổ, có thể ra đường đứng tình phản đối.
The next speaker, hands up. The next speaker is Camilla, followed by Nat Lin.
Mayor, councilmembers, as we close out Black History Month and head into Women's History Month, I thought it appropriate to pay homage to Marion Crook, a black woman, an engineer, and a doctor of social psychology. Dr. Crook brought us Voice Over Internet Protocol, also known as VoIP. VoIP is the technology that has been able to provide us with Zoom. It's quite a shame that this council will not allow meetings to continue via Zoom. The ability for public access and to interact with our government should always be at the forefront, never stifled. I do hope this council will reconsider. I'm also concerned about the blatant disregard that Amy and Nam Quan have shown towards their positions and our city ordinances. I filed a formal complaint against Nam Quan earlier today for violating the Code of Ethics and intimidation under the color of authority. Furthermore, Amy's defiant use of the city seal causing mass confusion within the community and havoc for the city manager and staff was wildly inappropriate. This entire episode has left me with questions I hope will be answered by the presenter of item 5.1, which are: One, if a council member is using her official title to host an event for residents and the sole source of advertisement for said event is social media, is it acceptable for the council member to have constituents blocked? Two, if a council member is using the official city seal to promote a city-sponsored event and said city council member is promoting that event on social media, is the council member illegally allowed to have constituents blocked from that social media account? Item 5.4, now you want to clarify? After a blatant violation at the last meeting, how kind of you. It bears repeating that this council nor city management are allowed to change policy outside the view of the public. What good are policies if you aren't going to abide by them? No wonder this city can't move forward. The lack of professionalism from some, namely Amy, is atrocious. It is absurd you have side conversations going on with the city attorney. In fact, at the last meeting, councilmember Ho had to ask you both to stop. And Amy, where do you keep your audacity? The fact you relentlessly ask the city attorney to get you coffee until he acquiesces your lack of decorum. And speaking of decorum, Amy, I'm starting to believe you think the sexual harassment training you went to was some sort of Kama Sutra conference. It was bad enough when you refer to it as sex training, but even worse when you violate all that was taught. Your incessant need to be handsy with members of our police department and other members of staff is quite concerning. You clearly learned nothing, and this council should recommend you redo the training until your blatant disregard for personal space, boundaries, and consent is rectified. At the last meeting, members of this council voted to move other items before a public hearing. This act was fiscally irresponsible. Members of the public have a right to be heard on items at a reasonable time. City business should always take precedence over your petty projects. By forcing the hearing to end to the end of the agenda and subsequently moving it to tonight's meeting, you wasted constituents' time and city resources as the public hearing item had to be properly noticed all over. Their actual monetary costs that come at every public hearing item is noticed. Please stop being...
The next speaker, the next speaker is Nat Lin.
Xin kính chào các thành viên của Hội đồng Thành phố Westminster.
Good evening to the members of the city council of the city of Westminster.
Hôm nay tôi xin phát biểu mấy điều ngắn như sau.
I have a few things that I would like to share, they are brief.
Điều thứ nhất, tôi đề nghị là Hội đồng Thành phố, mà cụ thể là ông thị trưởng ấy, là có thể ngăn chặn không cho những cái người phát biểu mà đem cha mẹ của từng thành viên trong Hội đồng Thành phố ra sĩ vả.
First of all, I would like to ask the city council, especially our mayor, to prevent the speaker from dragging up the name of the parents and ancestor of our city council member when they are up here.
Cái quyền tự do ở đây là lên đóng góp để cho xây dựng thành phố, chứ không phải là lên sĩ vả mà thậm chí đem cha mẹ của các nghị viên ra để mà mắng chửi.
So they have the right and the freedom to come up here to address the council, to contribute positively, and not to drag the name of the council members' parents and ancestors to the mud.
Tôi nói ví dụ cụ thể luôn, như cái anh Khải Đào. Từ cái thời ông thị trưởng tả đức trí cho đến bây giờ ông Nguyễn Mạnh Chí. Khải Đào là ai mà lúc nào cũng đem cha mẹ của người ta ra để dạy dỗ?
So for example, Khải Đào, who is he? From the time of Mayor Trí Tà to now Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen, who is he to come up here and lecture them and also talk about their parents?
Đó là một con người mà ra ứng cử nhiều lần, mà mỗi lần chỉ đạt được có hai, ba trăm lá phiếu.
So this is a person who had ran so many times, and each time he ran, he would only got two, three hundred votes.
Một con người như vậy mà như vậy, nghị viên là quá vô lý. Tôi nghĩ ông thị trưởng phải chặn đứng những lời như vậy.
You have a person, you know, with that kind of character. What, what, you know, what does he have to come up here to lecture our mayor and the city council member?
Tí dụ, cái người phụ nữ vừa rồi mặc áo vét đen và đôi mũ đen bà ta đi về rồi. Tại sao bà ta đem cha mẹ của quý vị ra chửi là sao?
And another example, that was that lady that were in a black vest and hat. While she has since left, but why did she would bring people's parents out and drag them through the mud? Why was she doing that?
Tôi nghĩ là con phải chấm dứt cái hành động vô văn hóa ở trong cái nghị trường này.
I think that we need to end these acts of by the people who were not raised properly in this, in this meeting.
Bây giờ tôi nói những cái bản hiệu mà ghi là gang of three.
Now I'm gonna talk about the signs that say the gangs of three.
Gang of three là gì? Là khi nào ba người cấu kết vô làm những cái điều phá hoại thành phố và gây chia rẽ.
What are gang of three? Gang of three is when, you know, three people got together, conspired to destroy the city, to cause the city to be divisive.
Tôi thấy ông thị trưởng Chí Sạch Ly, ông phó thị trưởng Nam Quan Nguyễn và cô Amy Phan Huynh mấy tháng nay làm những điều tốt đẹp cho thành phố, tại sao lại đưa cái bản gang of three là gì?
So what I have observed was that Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen, Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen, and city council member Nam Quan Nguyen for the past few months, they have contributed positively to the city. So why, why are you carrying those signs that say gang of three?
Nó chỉ là sự phá hoại.
These are acts of destructive act.
Thưa quý vị, thêm một điều nữa. Lần trước tôi lên tôi phát biểu rằng tất cả những cái người mà đến sĩ nhục vào ông phó thị trưởng Nam Quan Nguyễn và ông thị trưởng Chí Sạch Ly Nguyễn, phần lớn là người fan đi vận động bầu cử cho bà Kim Lee Hồ.
So one more thing. The last time I was up here, I talked about the people who attacked Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen and Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen. Most of them were supporters or help out with the mayor campaign for city council member Kim Lee Ho.
Thì sau đó bà Kim Lee Hồ phản hồi lại nói ngay trên nghị trường là tôi nói phết nêu. Bây giờ tôi dẫn chứng, trong tất cả những người đó là ai? Long Nguyễn, Khải Đào, Pháp Bùi, Thùy Võ. Tất cả những người đó đều là người đi vận động bầu cử cho Kim Lee Hồ. Chỉ có ba người này không phải là Mai Vũng Tàu và hai vợ chồng cái anh lính Mỹ. Thế thôi, thì tôi nói phần lớn là chính xác. Tại sao bà nghĩ nói tôi nói phết nêu, bà phải trả lời câu này.
So when I said that, city council member Kim Lee Ho reacted and spoke on the dais, and she said that was fake news. Well, let's see, you have Lan Nguyen, Khải Đào, Fat Buoi, Thùy Võ. They were all, they were, they were people who campaigned for her.
Hands up. Thank you. The next speaker is Khải Đào, Viet Youth Media, followed by Mai Anh.
Nãy giờ tôi nghe Pháp Bùi hiểu, thì chắc là quý vị gang of three này đang là rất là vui.
So from what I heard from the speaker tonight, I think that you, gang of three, would have been very happy.
Tức tức là quý vị đã kêu gọi được băng Đảng âm binh đến đây để mà bừng bô, để mà ca tụng quý vị, để mà kiểu như là vu khống những người mà bất đồng quan điểm với quý vị.
So you have summoned your dark forces to come here tonight to praise you and then to attack people who criticize you.
Giống như quân sư cố vấn thầy của quý vị đã dám chụp mũ những người mà đối lập, là phản đồng, là phản nghịch. Rồi quý vị rút giờ xuống, chúng tôi chỉ còn phát biểu được có ba phút.
Just like your advisor, who would falsely label people or his opponent as reactionary, you reduced our speaking time from five to three minutes.
Tôi nghĩ nếu mà cái trường hợp này tiếp tục, có lẽ tháng tới là nếu mà có nhiều người ca tụng bừng bô cho quý vị, quý vị sẽ tăng giờ để phát biểu lên thành mười phút.
So if this continues and then next month come, I think there would be a lot of people coming up here, people that you summoned in here to come up and praise you. You probably will increase speaking time to ten minutes next time, next month.
Yeah, và cũng như là để mà có một vài ý kiến với luật sư của thành phố.
And I have a few things that I wanted to share or address our city attorney.
Khi mà ông nói chuyện với những người này, tôi nghĩ là ông nên, ông phải hiểu. Họ không có được thông minh lắm, tôi dùng từ stupid, nhưng mà nói chung ông phải nói chuyện với họ. Giống như nói chuyện với con nít thì họ mới hiểu được.
When you talk to these evil here, you need to speak with them at a level like they are children, because they are stupid. You need to speak at their level.
Tức là tiếng Anh nó là spell it out.
You need to spell it out for them.
Khi mà ông nói cho ông Charlie á nói là cái Brown Act, nó doesn't allow them to engage with us, thì họ không có hiểu, thương ông.
So when you told Charlie that the Brown Act does not allow him to engage with us, he didn't understand that.
Khi mà nghị viên Kim Lee Hồ đã lên tiếng cảnh cáo nói là Nam Quan, tôi yêu cầu ngừng đồng hồ, tôi không nói cho đến khi Nam Quan ngồi xuống nghe tôi nói.
And when councilmember Kim Lee Ho warned, well, I'm gonna stop speaking until, and please stop my time, stop the clock on my time, and I would not say anything until Nam Quan got back in his seat.
Okay, make that a record. Khi mà ông nên nhớ khi mà họ vi phạm luật Brown Act, khi mà vi phạm những cái quy định như vậy, ông ngồi đó, ông không cảnh cáo, không can thiệp, không nhứng sau này, chúng tôi báo cáo họ lên cơ quan công quyền. Họ phải chịu trách nhiệm trước pháp luật. Nếu mà không phải là felony, chúng tôi sẽ recall. Ngược lại, chúng tôi sẽ liên lạc với ACLU, thưa họ, và cũng như thưa luồng hãng của ông, thương ông.
So when, when they were up there and they violated the Brown Act, you did not stop them. You did not step in. Well, if that continued, I will report it them to the relevant authorities and I'll ask the ACLU to come in to sue them and your law firm as well.
Và tôi cũng có muốn lời nhắn nhủ với cảnh sát trưởng.
And I have a few words I would like to say to the police chief.
Thương ông, năm ngoái tôi có báo cáo, tôi có ra sở cảnh sát báo cáo là có người hâm dò tính mạng tôi và cái người đó có text liên lạc với ông Charlie.
So last year, I came to the police department to report a person who had threatened my life, and that person had texts going back and forth with Charlie.
Cho đến ngày hôm nay, tôi có đầy đủ bằng chứng, tôi sẽ xin được lấy một cái hẹn để lên, để bổ sung tin tức với sở cảnh sát. Có bằng chứng là cái người mà text hâm dò tính mạng tôi, gọi điện thoại hâm dò tính mạng tôi là có quan hệ với băng Đảng đang hiện diện ở đây và đang ủng hộ Charlie.
So now that I have the evidence of that person who called and threatened my life, I would like to ask you to schedule a meeting so I could come and provide you with evidence. And that person belongs to this gang, and the gang is here tonight.
Cái băng đảng đó là đã bị thế giới liên án là một băng đảng khủng bố tầm tầm cỡ quốc tế. Đã từng đặt bom ở những đại sứ quán Thái Lan và Đại Hàn. Và Đại Hàn. Và họ đều đã bị xử tù và đã bị túng trục xúc. Và nếu mà từ ngày hôm nay sau khi tuyên bố cái này, tôi có mệnh hay gì, yêu cầu sở cảnh sát cứ việc điều tra từ ông Charlie và băng đảng của ông.
Time's up. I'm sorry, time's up. The next speaker is Mai Anh, followed by Don Lee.
Xin chào buổi tối các cái cả quý tổ đoàn và tất cả quý vị hiện có mặt tham gia. Tôi là một cư dân ở quận Cam này hơn bốn mươi năm. Dù ít chưa nhiều, tôi cũng hiểu được cộng đồng Việt Nam chúng ta ở đây. Mấy chục năm trước, cộng đồng chúng ta rất là vững mạnh, chúng ta đùng bọc lẫn nhau, chúng ta rất là gắn bó. Nhưng mười năm tới là đây. Có những sự đánh phá trong cộng đồng rất là mạnh lớn. Điến hình là một cái ông hồi nãy, ông là một người đã quyến viên quyến gì được quyến sương hùng như thế. Hình ảnh của ông ấy là đây là cái bằng khen của cộng sản, this one. He wearing a red shirt with yellow flags. Okay, right here, flag. So here, that's the chief of police. Can you see that him? So he is the one went to Vietnam. He went to Vietnam and he, I don't know between him and the communist. Maybe he had get order. Có thể là ông làm nhận một nhiệm vụ của cộng sản Việt Nam. Để qua đây đánh phá cộng đồng chúng ta. Cho nên chúng ta phải thận trọng. Đừng để cho cộng sản làm lung lay cái cộng đồng của chúng ta. Tôi rất là lấy xấu hổ, lấy làm xấu hổ. Cái tuần vừa rồi tôi có lên đây và tôi đã chứng kiến một số người ngồi chung với hai vợ chồng ông Bùi Phát. Một cái cô đó, cô đó mặc áo đỏ đó, cô bỏng hồng hồng đó, cô lên đây chỉ trích hai cái vị thị trưởng và phó thị trưởng ở đây. Rất là vô văn hóa. Đó là một cái lĩnh diệu của cộng sản. Và tôi không muốn rằng những người Việt Nam chúng ta nhẹ giã nghe说是 là cộng sản. Chúng ta hãnh diện, hãnh diện lên hiện nay có những thị trưởng và phó thị trưởng, tất cả những vị đang làm việc ở đây. Còn tôi xin thưa bà Kimberly Hồ, bà ngó thẳng mặt tôi đây. Tôi không có la xa lạ gì bà hết. Tôi chỉ mong rằng chúng ta là người Việt Nam với nhau, đừng để cho cộng đồng sở tại họ khuyết cách và ngồi trên đầu mình, họ làm những việc kinh tâm hãi trên đầu mình làm xuống. Mới giờ rồi, cha Nguyễn Sương Hùng đó, ông đi ra ngoài.
The next speaker is Don Lee, followed by Sun Tran.
Good evening, mayor, council member, staff and PD officer. Sợ dĩ, tôi cần lên diễn đàn thành phố hôm nay là bởi vì bà Hồ đã phủ nhận về những lời cáo buộc trong buổi họp hội đồng thành phố lần trước. Nói có sách, mách có chứng, xin mọi người hãy coi lại YouTube mà video thành phố đã ghi lại trong buổi họp đặc biệt hội đồng thành phố ngày 9 tháng 12. Phó thị trưởng Manzo và nghị viên Tài Đỗ hôm đó đã thẳng thắn công nhận rằng "The election was very fair and square." Và hai ông bà đã hân hoan gửi lời, và hai ông đã hân hoan gửi lời chúc mừng đến ông tên thị trưởng và hai tên nghị viên đã có một chiến thắng áp đảo vẻ vang. Ngay cả ông Moses Castillo cũng đã gọi phone một tuần trước để chúc mừng ba vị Tân Trần cử này. Đến lượt bà Hồ thì bà đã ngang ngược nói rằng "The election was not fair and square at all." Và bà do vậy đã dĩ nhiên là không có lời trao chúc mừng nào. Điều này hoàn toàn không phải lối ứng xử của một người đã được giáo dục tại Hoa Kỳ. Điều này cũng nói lên tâm địa gian mênh, bản tính bẩm sinh rối chả, ngang ngược, lật lọc cũng như bản tính Dan Ak Gen Tị. Khi bà Hồ yêu cầu hội đồng thành phố ngừng việc phát thể yip ka một trăm đô la cho các cư dân cao niên chỉ vì bà nhìn thấy các cư dân tất cả đều là cử tri bầu cho ông thị trưởng. Trên đây chỉ là một vài nguyên nhân tại sao có hiện tượng được làm vua thua làm giặc mà các hạ bộ và tay sai của bà Hồ và Phát Bùi tiếp tục quậy phá tại các buổi họp hội đồng thành phố gần đây làm xấu hổ cho cộng đồng người Việt ở Hoa Kỳ cũng như trên toàn thế giới. Thank you for listening.
September on December 9, 2022, where Vice Mayor, Dance Vice Mayor Manzo and City Council Member Tai Do have frankly admitted that the election was very fair and square, I quote, and the two of them had graciously congratulated our new mayor and new city council member for their landslide victory. Even Mr. Moses Castillo also had also called a week prior to that to congratulate the three new elected official. But when it comes to Ms. Hall's turn, she said that, and I quote, "The election was not fair and square at all." And she did not congratulate the people who won the election. This is not a conduct of the way a person who was educated and raised in America should act. And so this show her her true heart, that show that she's devious, that she's two-faced, and she's out of jealousy. She asked the city council member to stop the gift card program, the grocery gift card program for our senior citizens because she saw that the people who came to apply for the card were people who vote for our mayor. So, you know, she's the type that if she wins, she would take everything, but if she lose, she gonna cause trouble and she gonna ask her latchkey, such as Fat Buoi, to continue to cause trouble, to attack the city official at the recent city council meeting. And that brings shame to our Vietnamese community here in America and also the entire world. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sun Tran, followed by Tuivong.
Chào thành phố Westminster, buổi họp ngày hôm nay và quý vị có mặt ở tại đây. Tất cả cách đây mấy tuần trước, quý vị đã lên tham dự ý kiến, tôi không nhắc nữa và cái thứ hai tôi không có chống ai cả. Hôm nay tôi có ý kiến tại thành phố Westminster về vấn đề YouTube của Nam Quang và một anh Tiến Dũng cách đây hai tuần có mặt ở đây. Bữa hôm Tết, Tết Nguyên Đáng ở tại thành phố Westminster. Nam Quang và Tiến Dũng có làm YouTube quay ở tại thành phố Westminster. Một số đông người ở ngoài đó. Vợ chồng của anh gì Mai Mai Vũng Tàu, Mai Vũng Tàu, anh Mai Vũng Tàu là cách đây hai tuần đã tới. Người ta hỏi ý kiến của Nam Quang. Nhưng anh bạn của anh Nam Quang có nói ở trên cả một cái khu vực vừa tao nghe gọi là côn đỉ, à nói thẳng nha, côn đỉ, anh dễ dễ thích chỗ đó là gấp mười lần. Đó là cái thứ nhất. Cái chuyện thứ hai, cách đây hai tuần, quý vị nhớ hai vợ chồng mà cựu quân nhân của quân đội Hoa Kỳ á, nhớ. Tất cả mọi người ở đây đều yêu chuộng, chiến sĩ quân lực Hoa Kỳ đã tham gia từ Ha ở Iraq, Iran trở về đây để phục vụ tại thành phố Westminster. Tôi cho quý vị coi cái hình. Đây là trò chơi của Nam Quang và Tiến Tiến Dũng. Người ta đội cái mũ, cái mũ cộng sản của Trung Quốc, đội lên đầu của quân của của chiến sĩ quân đội Hoa Kỳ ở tại đây. Quý vị nhìn đi, Nam Quang nhìn, Nguyễn Mạnh Chí nhìn.
So please, please address the council.
Tôi không có tấn công, đây là tôi chỉ nói chuyện về cho thành phố Westminster biết. Thứ nhất, quý vị nên bảo đảm an ninh cho cặp gia đình này. Tại vì người ta, cái anh này á là quân lực Hoa Kỳ. Mà người ta, mấy người này kêu người ta là cộng sản, quý vị nhìn đi, cái an ninh của quý vị rồi, tôi cho quý vị biết và quý vị phải ngay nói cảnh sát bảo vệ cho cặp gia đình này. Tôi báo cho cảnh sát và thành phố Westminster trước, nhiều khi tôi không báo ra quý vị không có làm được, lỡ người ta cái tính mạng của người ta rồi quý vị kêu tại sao không nói trước. Cuối cùng, tôi mong thành nghị viên Nam Quang và Nguyễn Tiến Dũng hãy xóa cái clip này đi, okay? Xóa cái clip này không nên sử dụng, cái này rất nguy hiểm. Còn bạn làm cái gì trong thành phố Westminster, chúng tôi không có chống đối nhưng cái này rất nguy hiểm cho tính mạng của gia đình của người ta.
Time's up. The next speaker is Tuivong.
Quý vị city council, number one, tôi muốn address cái này với lại ông city manager. Là ông tôi đã gửi email nhưng mà tôi không thấy response. Yeah.
First of all, I would like to say hello to the city council member. And the first thing I would like to do is I would like to address the Mr. City Manager.
And the first thing I would like to do is I would like to address the Mr. City Manager. I have sent you an email, but you have not respond.
Là cái này là verbal warning cho Nam Quang Media. Là tôi mủi cái video của Nam Quang Media là tôi download hết và đã nói xạo về tôi và gia đình tôi. Thì this is a verbal warning.
So this is a verbal warning for Nam Quang and his media channel. I have downloaded each every clip you have told lie about me and my family.
Yeah, và tôi sẽ sue, nếu mà không ngừng, tôi sẽ sue thành phố, ok? Thành phố đang bị bankruptcy trong tình trạng bankruptcy. Và YouTube của Nam Quang cũng để nuôi con cái, tôi biết anh có hai đứa con, tôi không muốn đá đổ chén cơm của anh. Nhưng mà nếu mà một lăng nữa đó, là tôi sẽ có luật sư sue thành phố Westminster, chắc chắn như vậy.
And if this continue, I would sue the city of Westminster. I know the city of Westminster is on the verge of bankruptcy. And then you, Nam Quang, you need your YouTube channel to support your two kids. But if it happened one more time, I would sue you and I would sue the city of Westminster.
Và điều thứ hai là tôi muốn là city council có cái official respond về cái vụ mà Nam Quang possess súng. Mà cái súng đó đã bán cho ai, vô tay ai tại vì gần đây có một vụ nổ súng Monterey Park, San Francisco. Ông một ông giám mục đang bị, vừa rồi bị bắn chết. Thì một người như anh mà ra chửi dân chúng như vậy là anh có. Và cái người mà đầu ấp tay gối với anh mà anh dùng súng đe dọa. Trong cái tờ giấy 151 trang restraining order, cái trang thứ 54, nó nói rõ ràng là anh dùng súng đe dọa girlfriend của anh, cái đó là sự thật chứ không phải là fake. Đã gửi email cho thị trưởng, cho Nam Quang và tất cả city council. Thì hôm nay tôi muốn request official, official respond. What have you done? Quý vị đã làm gì chưa?
So the second thing is that I would like to get a response from, an official response from our city council about Nam Quang Win possessing a gun. What happened to that gun? Whom did he sword to? Because recently, we have this shooting incident in Monterey Park, San Francisco, and then the Catholic priest. Nam Quang here, bishop, Nam Quang here, she had the same bet with his girlfriend and then threaten her with a gun. And he cannot deny that. That's the truth. Because in that 151 page court file at page 54, it said that he used a gun against his girlfriend. So I have emailed the city council and I have not gotten an official response. So I demand an official response from you.
Những lúc anh đi ra ngoài, không biết có đi ra xe hay không, cầm súng vô có ai check hay không? Nếu mà xảy ra những vụ nổ súng như là ở Monterey Park, quý vị nghĩ sao?
When he go out, there's no one to check whether he carry a gun or not. And if, if there is an incident like a shooting, like what happened in Monterey Park, then what would you think?
Nên thành, one more time, tôi muốn có cái official respond, city attorney, please.
So one more time, I would like to have an official response from the city attorney, please.
Và cảm ơn quý vị.
So thank you, everyone. Thank you. Có có cần tham dự không? Okay, thì cô nói, nói gì nhá, okay.
Nhắn gọn ba cap thôi, không cần nhiều. Rồi bây giờ chào buổi tối, các vị đang ngồi ở trên đây.
Good evening to everyone on the dias.
Lời đầu tiên thì, rồi lời đầu tiên là cảm ơn cái diễn hành Tết vừa qua.
First of all, thank you for the Tet Hare.
Rồi lời thứ hai, hôm nay tôi tới đây là bởi vì là tôi xác định khi mà lời nói của chị Nhật Linh là đúng, khi mà Kim Bli Hò nói là chị Nhật Linh là phật nèo.
The second thing tonight that I would like to say tonight is that I would like to confirm what Ms. Nhật Linh has said about city council member Kimberly Hall saying that it was fake news.
Và tôi cũng chỉ giới thiệu luôn cái người mà sau khi mà chửi những nghị viên ở trên đây xong mà bỏ đi ra liền, tên là Lan Hương.
And I would like to mention the name of that person who after verbally attacking our city council up here and then leaving right away, her name is Lang Hua.
Nếu mà bây giờ Kimberly Hò nói đó không phải là người của Kimberly Hò, có ngon rác đợi tôi là đối chất thẳng mặt với mặt với tôi nè.
So if Ms. Kimberly Hò is now saying that that person is not a person from her that was sent by Ms. Kimberly Hò, wow, you can, you can, you can confront me directly here.
Bởi vì tôi đã từng là người bị nhóm của Kimberly Hò níu kéo.
Because I had been, well, I was tried, I was, I was being recruited by that group, that Kimberly Hò group.
Nhưng tôi không có binh vực bất kỳ một ai người nào làm đúng tổ ủng hộ.
I, I don't, I'm not here to, you know, trying to protect anyone. I just support people who are doing the right things.
Cho nên hôm nay tôi tới đây, tôi mong rằng quý vị lên tới đây.
So I'm here tonight and I hope that now that you have gone up here on the dias.
Làm ơn, anh nói cho có văn hóa một chút xíu.
Please say things that are proper, that are culturally proper.
Đừng để cho người ta nói mình có cha săn nhưng không có mẹ dưỡng.
Don't, don't say that you were given birth, but you were not taught properly.
Lên tới đây, đừng bao giờ sử dụng những điều khiếm nhả, mất giá trị của con người Việt Nam đi.
And when you get up here, do not say things that are insensitive and not proper because that lower the value of our Vietnamese people.
Tôi hy vọng rằng lần sau mấy anh mấy chị đừng có bới mốc những cái chuyện đã nói rồi, lặp đi lặp lại nữa.
And I hope that at the next meeting, you do not keep repeating what have been said. You keep regurgitating, you know, things.
Bởi vì tôi không phải là dân cư Westminster, nhưng tôi mong thành phố Westminster đừng giống thành phố Garden Row.
Even though I'm not a resident of the city of Westminster, I hope that the city would not turn out like the city of Garden Row.
Cho nên bằng bất cứ giá nào, tôi cũng sẽ cùng với mọi, sát cánh với mọi người, ủng hộ và giữ vững cái thành trì Westminster nếu có ai muốn gọi phá.
And so at all costs, I would try to help to protect the city if there are people trying to cause trouble or destroy the city.
Cho nên tôi hy vọng rằng mấy anh mấy chị làm ơn mở não ra, câu này là tôi dùng hơi khiếm nhả đó. Nhưng tôi mong rằng anh chị mở não ra, nhìn coi ai làm đúng và ai làm sai.
So I'm gonna ask that you use your brain and, you know, I know when I say this, it's kind of, it's kind of heavy. But use your brain to see who's doing the right thing and who's not.
Còn ba vị dân dân cửa kiêm, mình cho người ta một thời gian để người ta làm việc, đừng nhục mạ người ta nữa.
So when it comes to the new pre-elected official, give, give them time, give them time to work, stop or attacking them.
Còn ở đây không có ai bưng bồ ai cả, đừng đổ lỗi người này người kia bưng bồ nhau.
There, there's no one here to, you know, to, they're here solely to praise this person or that person. Don't, 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 don't say that.
Tại vì hiện tại tôi biết ở trong đây rất là nhiều người biết tôi và biết đến tôi, tôi không bưng bồ ai hết, tôi không nhận tiền của anh hết.
And, and I know that, I say that because a lot of people here know me and they know me. I would not be someone who would just come, who would, would, would get paid and come here and praise people.
Bản thân tôi chỉ ủng hộ những cái đúng.
I just support things that are right.
Cảm ơn.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Chin Din, followed by Tony Lee.
Cảm ơn thị trưởng và tất cả các nghị viên, cùng tất cả mọi người trong thính vọng.
Good evening, Mayor and the entire, the entire, the entire city council as well as everyone in the room tonight.
Tôi là Chính Đinh.
My name is Chin Din.
Tôi muốn nhắn nhủ thứ như thế này. Tất cả mọi người dân ở thành phố Westminster, người ta không phải là ngu, người ta là có dân trí thức. Người ta biết chọn mặt gỏi vàng chứ không phải là như những cái người mà phá hoại cái tiểu nhân mà chọn, chọn tiền, chọn đống cứt vào mặt.
So I want to share with you that the resident of the city of Westminster, they're not stupid, okay? They have elected people whom they think are capable. So...
Mình phải học, mình qua bên đây mấy chục năm rồi, mình phải học những cái hay, cái giỏi để mình đưa đất, đưa Westminster này, nói riêng và nước Mỹ nói chung, để, để đưa đến những cái hay, cái tốt chứ không phải là cứ đến đây bao nhiêu từ hôm mà ba người thị trưởng, phó thị trưởng cùng Amy Pan West đậu rồi đó, thì từ hôm nay tôi thấy là toàn khi mà mỗi lần họp như thế này là toàn đã phá nhau không à?
So... I, I want people to come up here to contribute positively, to share good things, good idea. What I saw, and that should have been the case, but what I saw was since the elections of the new mayor, vice mayor and city council member Amy West, the people who came up here instead of contributing positively, positively, they attacked these new pre-officials and also to, to, to cause trouble within the city.
Tôi mong rằng những lần tới thì mình phải góp ý những cái hay, cái tốt cho thành phố để đưa đến thành phố Westminster một, một thành phố giàu mạnh.
So I hope that at the next meeting, you would contribute positively to help the city to be better, to be more prosperous.
Cũng như là mình phải học, cái người bản xứ ở đây này, khi mà người lúc đầu á thì khi mà ra tranh cử á thì người ta bằng mặt mà không bằng lòng. Đến khi mà người ta đậu, khi mà xong xuôi hết rồi đấy, người ta bằng mặt, bằng lòng cùng hợp tác với nhau để làm, làm việc để tiến lên chứ không phải là thụt xuống hoặc là chửi nhau.
So I hope that you would learn from the native born here that during campaign or election time, they have disagreement, but once that is over, they would come together to build the city, to make the city better. So that is something that you need to learn.
Nếu mà những cư dân thành phố này, người ta không có học hoặc là người ta bị mua thuộc thì không có, thị trưởng, phó thị trưởng và cô Amy West này không có ngồi đây đâu.
So if the resident of this city, if they were stupid, if, you know, they didn't know anything, then they would not have elected the mayor, vice mayor and city council member Amy West. Those three wouldn't be here.
Đây là cái bọn tiểu nhân do bà Kim Bli Hò đứng đầu.
They, 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 they were latchkey that were led by Kimberly Hò.
Tôi mong rằng bà hãy nhìn về những việc gì bà làm mà bà hãy nhìn thẳng vào những sự phá hoại của cộng đồng.
I, I, I think you need to look to see what you are doing that you are destroying the community.
Tôi mong rằng bà đêm đêm về bà ngủ bà gác tay lên chán, bà nghĩ cái nào phải, cái nào quấy.
I, I hope that when you go home and before you sleep at night, you, you would think to see what is right and what's wrong.
Tôi chỉ nhắn bà một lần chót như vậy thôi và mong rằng những lần kế tiếp đây mà vấn đề mà hội họp như thế này thì tất cả mọi người đều đóng góp để cho, chứ tôi thấy từ hôm đó tới nay, tôi thấy chẳng có sự đóng góp, u khuyết điểm nào cho thành phố mà toàn là thấy gây kín nhau mà đâm ra phá hoại rồi cái thứ hai, rồi cái lần chót là cá mươi ninh thị trưởng, phó thị trưởng cũng đã là làm cái diễn hành. Ở hôm Tết, tôi thấy là rất thời gian, rất ngắn mà lại thành công tốt đẹp. Mặc dù tôi không có ở đây, nhưng mà tôi theo dõi, tôi thấy là thành công rất tốt đẹp và tốt đẹp. Thế mà cũng có kẻ phá thì tôi không biết là toàn là những kẻ mà ngâm cứt phun người.
So I hope that the next time, we have, at the next meeting, people would contribute positively instead of attacking each other and destroying the city. The last thing I would like to say is I would like to say thanks to the mayor and vice mayor for the Tet Hare. Even though I didn't live here, I, I, I follow it and I saw that.
Hands up. Then the next speaker is Tony Lee, followed by Roger Mendrum.
First of all, I would like to congratulate Mayor Charlie Ching-Win, Vice Mayor Nam Quang Win, City Council Member. I was the one praying that they would get elected. And so if you wanna attack someone, you can attack.
And then, quý vị, quý vị ở tối tại đây, tất cả mọi người nhé. Đã bầu ba người này cho người ta một câu hỏi, người ta làm việc.
So I, I think we need to respect the votes of the people because and then give these three elected, newly elected official a chance so that they can work.
Vớ lại em rất thích ông thị trưởng Ching-Win, Mạnh Chí anh ta là người tốt, anh ta đi nhà thờ, là good person.
And I like Mayor Charlie Ching-Win, he's a good person, he attended church.
And then, cho nên là quý vị là hai ông bà Mỹ đó có cái sai là tức là ghen, óc thui đó, hỏi hai ông bà đó. Ông bà tốt lành chưa, tại sao ông bà lại nói người ta là như chửi đây nhỉ?
So I would like to ask the two people in the back here with carrying signs as a gang of three. Have you, are you perfect? So if you're not, if you're not perfect, why would you be attacking these people?
Tất cả mọi người, ai cũng có tội, chứ nó chỉ có thiên chuông mà là không có tội. Cho nên là mọi người đừng bao giờ chửi nhau, phán xét nhau lên án nhau.
So we, we all sinner except for God. So don't, don't judge, don't criticize each other nor attack each other.
Yeah, so cho nên là, cho nên tôi muốn quý vị là phải yêu thương tha thứ. Sau đó là, sau đó là mình cùng tay làm việc chung nhau để thành phố này là phát triển tốt đẹp.
I, I, I wish that we, you know, you would love each other, forgive each other so that we can work together to make the city better.
Sau đó là, cái lời cuối cùng, tôi chúc tất cả mọi người, tất cả mọi người trong đây, lúc nào cũng là khỏe mạnh.
Sau đó là cái lời cuối cùng tôi chúc tất cả mọi người, tất cả mọi người trong đây lúc nào cũng là khỏe mạnh và luôn được bình yên. God bless you all.
And so, last, I would like to wish everyone here, uh, good health and peace and so God bless you all.
Next speaker is Roger Mendrum.
Good evening, Roger Mendrum. Live and in person. You guys haven't seen me for a while. You miss me? Thank you. Um, first of all, I would like to make a request to add something to the next agenda because it's clear that everyone needs a refresher course even though you've just gone through some training recently. Can we please add to the agenda to publicly read some city ordinances and resolutions that have been violated constantly? One, the city seal, who Amy West publicly says she doesn't care about the ordinance and she's gonna do whatever she wants. And the code of conduct and the code of ethics is constantly being violated publicly, especially Mr. Nam Quan in disparaging his fellow, uh, council members on his YouTube channel. Can you just stop lying and talking negatively about your fellow council members? And I really don't understand how some of these people behind me here have, are living a separate reality of the truth. And maybe we need to come back and publicly play your, play your YouTube channel and let everybody fact check it and be honest with each other. Just be honest with each other. Why can't we do that? I've been going to these city council meetings since probably, God, before 2017 probably. I've been to many, many meetings here. You all know me. I've never been to a council meeting where have so many residents talking crap on each other. This, this community is so divided and you're not helping. You are not helping. You are not pushing this city forward in what you're saying on your YouTube channel. Just look in the mirror and be better. These people are wishful thinking that things are better because it hasn't gotten better. Hasn't gotten better with this man on this council for four years and it's not gotten better with you two new ones either. You're not adding dignity. You're not adding respect. In these private little secret conversations between you and Mr. Bettenhausen here, what is wrong with you? Is that proper, Christian? Is that really proper and ethical? Have private conversations constantly in these meetings? Is that a Brown Act violation? Secret conversations constantly in meetings disrupting the whole dais? It's evident. I don't need to talk all negatively about you because there's plenty of people that have done it already. Everybody's getting bashed on. Can we just get with reality? One reality and one truth? Thank you.
Um, the next speaker is via Zoom. Uh, the first speaker is Amy Walsh. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
I don't know how, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, just making sure. Good evening, city attorney, city manager, city staff, council member Monzo and council member Ho. I would like to remind our mayor, Charlie, that the mayor title is a title alone. He does not hold any extra authority at all. Amy, Nam Quan and Charlie, the three of you talk about making sure that the people bring their evidence. Well, I think that people should just be more focused on bringing their evidence to the police and the district attorney and their own lawyers. As a prior school board member, I would like to point out that like, uh, Michael said earlier, anyone, any person on that school board can bring something on the agenda. That's called equality, making sure that every single person has a voice. So by you creating these extra added issues, you're taking away the voice of your fellow council members. Um, I would also like to address something that happened at the last meeting and, uh, chief, I'm hoping that you can help me out with this. Um, I would like to please ask you that if tonight, if Nam Quan proceeds to threaten and put his face and hands in Kimberly's face again, that you please remove him from the meeting. Nam Quan, you sir are a coward and the fact that you think it's an appropriate way to speak to a woman shows that you are not fit to sit up on that dais. Uh, Lucy, I believe Camilla has dropped off some gifts to the city council. Um, more like donations, I would say really, uh, because I believe that the council maybe needs a little bit of a refresher on Robert's Rules of Order. Uh, so I thought maybe if I got them little cheat sheets, they could keep them up there and, you know, that way they could help themselves run a, an effective meeting. Um, you know, I'm hoping that you can pass those out to them tonight so they can take it home and maybe study it. Um, also, I would request that, uh, Nam Quan be moved away from Kimberly on the dais and I would also request that Amy West be removed away from Christian Bettenhausen. It's completely out of control up there and it's literally just a cluster F. I can't believe that I have to sit here and watch these three twat waffles take up everyone's time while the things that really...
I'm sorry, your time's up. The next speaker is Daltra. You may unmute yourself and begin.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I totally agree with Mr. Kiet who spoke earlier tonight. Um, Westminster is a non-communist city. Hung Nguyen, the first speaker tonight, is clearly a Vietnamese traitor. What he spoke to tonight is to protect the Vietcoms flag in the city of Westminster. This is not acceptable. He must stop it. And the second thing is I also agree with Miss Nitling about the side that Miss Terry Ren carry gang of three. Miss, Miss Ren.
We respect you. You need to respect people. Please. Please continue.
I'm sorry, please continue.
Are, are you talking about me, Miss, Miss Mayor?
No, please continue.
No, please continue.
Okay, okay. Uh, what I'm talking is about Miss Terry Ren's side, that she carry gang of three. I know you, Miss Terry Ren, you always, um, uh, carry the side gang of three and now it's a new gang of three. What do you mean gang of three? You all always have...
Make sure she addresses it to the council, to the council. She can...
Okay, okay, that Miss Carrie, uh, Miss Ren always have a look, negative look of the, uh, of the group of people. Yeah, she doesn't see what the, the good thing that she go, she call the new gang of three, what they did. The first thing I have to congratulate the, um, city staff and, um, the mayor Charlie Nguyen and councilwoman Amy Fan West for doing very good job on the Ted parade. And the second thing I want to, um, congratulate also the city man, city staff and the three, uh, the, um, mayor Charlie Nguyen, vice mayor Nam Quan Nguyen and council member Amy Fan West for the thing they do to pass out the gift card for, I, I don't know how many people. But today I came out to help, um, to help the seniors to fill out their application. So you know that this is a very cold, windy and cold day, so we have about more...
If, uh, mayor, there's no one else, uh, raising their hand at this time on Zoom and that concludes our communications.
Oh, thank you very much. Uh, thanks for coming out and, um, express your opinions. I, at this point here, I will let the council, if you have any, uh, brief comments about the public, uh, public comments. Please, it's time, we respect you. This time for the council to do the work. Okay, please, forget it. Look, you have it? Yeah, okay. Please, you recognize.
Okay, but, um, thank you. So I just want to say thank you for all that came out and Vanessa and her team, uh, successfully gave out pretty much all the gift card today. We really appreciate you guys. And our WPD out there as well and Planning Commission, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me just jump in real quickly. What you were talking about was a brief response.
Or council comment, yes.
Two comments, not, not to other comments, those would have, those would come at the end of the meeting. Other comments about activities and things of that nature.
Councilmember West, uh, do you have any comments? Respond to the, um, comments.
Well, I just want to thank you for all that came out to participate in public speaking. So, thank you.
That's, that's okay. All right. Who else? Anything else? If not, then we can move on and I know that, uh...
Yeah, may, or yes, um, I, so I would actually, um, request if we can move the public hearing and 5.1 up to before the consent calendar, um, we have some additional guests here, so we'd just like to...
Move them on.
Second.
4.1 and 5.1 to before the consent calendar.
So at this time, um, clerk, please read the public hearing into the record.
Um, I'm sorry to move the item, um, the motion, I didn't catch who made the second.
I did.
You didn't, thank you.
So the request is to move 5.1 and 5.2.
Five, no, 4.1.
4.1 and 5.1.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Thank you. So that motion was made by the mayor, seconded by council member Monzo to move, um, agenda item 4.1 and 5.1 out of order and before the consent calendar. Councilmember, uh, councilwoman Fan West, yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
So Madam Clerk, uh, please read the public hearing into the record, please.
Thank you, um, mayor, and that is anyone wishing to speak on a, uh, public hearing item may speak in person or via Zoom. Uh, speakers during public hearing comments will each have, um, five minutes to speak on each public hearing item. Any person wishing to address the city council in person, um, should complete a green speaker card that is provided at the entrance to council chambers and submitted to me, the city clerk. When your name is called, please step forward to the podium and at that time state your name and city of residence, which is optional for the record. Any person wishing to address the city council via Zoom should press the raise your hand button. If you are using a telephone and have dialed in, press star nine to raise your hand. When your name is called, I will enable your microphone and, uh, you may press unmute, the unmute button to unmute yourself. If calling from a telephone or cellphone, please press star six on your dial pad to, um, mute and unmute yourself. Please state your name and city of residence, optional for the record. And this is for item 4.1.
So item 4.1 continued from February 8, 2023 meeting, public hearing, consideration of the city of Westminster's, uh, housing and community development needs in preparation for, uh, of the fiscal year of 2023, 2024 and your action plan. May I ask for a stop report, please?
Thank you, mayor. Um, item 4.1 is, uh, continued from the February 8, 2023 meeting. It's a public hearing, uh, consideration of the city of Westminster's housing and community development needs in preparation of the fiscal year 2023 and 2024 annual action plan. So we do come before you every year with this. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Michael Sun, who's our housing specialist.
Thank you, Adolfo. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Um, some of you might be familiar with this process, but some of you are new to this. So I'm just gonna provide a brief, um, PowerPoint presentation in regards to tonight's public hearing item. Um, before I begin, I'm just gonna give you a brief overview of some key terms that's gonna be used throughout this presentation. Um, one of them being HUD, it stands for the Department of Housing and Urban Development that manages federal funding. And it's a federal agency that manages federal funding, is responsible for national policy and programs that address America's housing needs that improve and develop nation's communities and enforce fair housing laws. CDBG refers to Community Development Block Grant Program and it's a federal grant the city receives annually on a formula basis. The CDBG's overriding purpose is to support brick and mortar activities to primarily benefit low and moderate income persons. For example, brick and mortar activities include, may include rehabilitation, preservation, public improvements and facilities. Home refers to home investment partnerships programs and it's a federal grant the city receives annually on a formula basis and is designed exclusively to create affordable housing for low-income households. So tonight's public hearing purpose is to receive and follow comments regarding the city's needs and priorities in preparation of the city's fiscal year 2023, 2024 annual action plan. Any comments received will help prioritize activities and projects for the upcoming fiscal year. And here's a brief overview of our annual action plan schedule. I do want to note that there was a typo in the staff report that I just caught recently. So here are the corrected dates for the annual action plan schedule. Um, tonight serves the, uh, first step in the three-step process regarding our community needs and priorities. And based off of tonight's comments, um, that'll help draft, um, CDBG and home funds, um, that'll be incorporated to our draft annual action plan, which will be available for public review and, um, the city's council's consideration at the March 22nd hearing. And then lastly, um, as required by HUD, we have to have a second public hearing, which closes the 30-day public review period and also, um, for council's consideration to adopt the annual action plan, which is scheduled for April 26. So what is an annual action plan? The annual action plan describes how the city will allocate CDBG and home funds to address priority needs and specific goals of the five-year consolidated plan, uh, which was, was adopted by the city council back in May of 2020. And, um, I'll go a little, I'll explain it a little more in detail on the next slide of what the five-year con plan is. Um, the annual action plan is also required and reviewed by HUD for Westminster to receive its annual allocation of CDBG and home funds. The city receives approximately $950,000 in CDBG and $550,000 in home funds annually. And again, this is based off of, um, a formula basis, so the amounts that we, the city receives on an annual basis will fluctuate from year to year. In May of 2020, council adopted the city's current five-year consolidated plan, which serves as a strategic framework that establishes community priority needs and goals that help prioritize future activities and projects implemented. that help prioritize future activities and projects implemented through annual action plans being funded out of CDBG and home funds. The needs and goals were identified through community participation via a community workshop, community need survey, consultation with various stakeholders, local agencies and service providers during the preparation of the consolidated plan. And here are the, um, priority how, or priority needs and goals that were identified as part of the five-year consolidated plan. For priority housing needs, um, the goals listed were to preserve existing and create new affordable housing as well as a goal to sustain and strengthen neighborhoods. And in staff report, uh, I, we identified possible programs that might, um, be funded throughout the five-year con plan to address the priority housing needs and goals. For priority community services, um, we identified two goals, um, one of them being to support agencies that assist public special, assist special needs populations as well as a goal of to provide, um, needed community services to benefit low and moderate income persons. For priority parks and recreational facilities, we identified a goal of preserving existing and create new community facilities. For priority infrastructure improvements, we identified a goal of to, um, provide needed infrastructure improvement to low and moderate income neighborhoods. And lastly, other priority community development needs is a goal of, um, planning for housing community development. So staff recommends that the mayor city council receive and follow comments that is received tonight regarding the city's housing community development needs and preparation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual action plan. And attached to the staff report is an overview of CDBG and home allocations for this current fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and a preliminary, um, CDBG and home funding request for the upcoming fiscal year for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Um, I do want to note that HUD hasn't published, um, the annual, okay, uh, annual allocations for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. So the allocations that are identified in that spreadsheet are just estimates for, uh, references. And I'm available to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, it is time for the council, um, questions, if there's any. Let me start out by with, uh, Councilmember West, which is District One.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. So I have a question regarding the funding from the state of California. Uh, those are really good funding, a lot, a huge amount to help our city of Westminster. I was just wondering, are there any change attached or requirement of what we have to meet in order to get those funding? What are the requirement for those housing?
So in regards to this, tonight's public hearing item, these are federal funds, not state funds. Um, so.
Are there requirements for it?
There's, yes. Most likely with any grant funding, there's also different requirements that's attached to those grant funds.
Can you let me know what are some of the requirements that we have to meet?
Well, it just depends on the type of grant, um, but the city staff does meet on a monthly basis with a grant consultant to, um, identify and leverage any funding available that can, we, the city can possibly apply for.
Can you bring back to us, the council, and let us know what exactly are the requirement on those grant?
We can certainly provide a summary. Um, I, there, there's a plethora of grant opportunities. Um, so, Adolfo, I don't know if you want to add to that.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, Council Fan West. Are you asking about grants just in general or specifically the requirements for, for HUD and CDBG?
Yes.
Okay. So, so for HUD and CDBG, so you can explain.
Yeah. So for HUD and CDBG, these are the only grants available that the city receives on an annual basis from the federal government, from HUD. So state funding is another source of funding that requires a separate process for that.
Yeah, I understand that since you clarify it. So I want to know the federal funding. What are the requirements? As we know, nothing is free. Usually when the federal or state give us money, they want us to do certain things. So if you can let us know as the council, what are the requirement for this federal fund? I would really appreciate that.
All right. Uh, next is, uh, Council, um, Members of Menzo. Uh, you're welcome, next.
I have just a question, Michael. Um, on page two of your staff report, and I see that, I've seen this in the past where it states that, that, um, the city, um, you know, held the uh, community needs survey, um, and also a workshop. Is that just, was there one recently held? Or is that just one that was held in the past?
That was held in the past as part of our process to, um, to draft our five-year consolidated plan. So that was part of that process.
Do you know when was, when that was?
That was back in, I believe, in two thousand nineteen, before we had to formally submit our five-year plan to HUD.
Okay. And then how, how long is that for? I mean, when, when would you have to do another one?
So typically when we do our five-year consolidated plan, that requires a year in advance of planning efforts. Um, so our new cycle would begin in twenty twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So sometime in twenty twenty-four, we'll begin our process for the five-year consolidated plan.
Okay. Um, let's see here. On, on some of the, on the, whenever we get to some of the, um, I'll ask that later. Um, in the past, for the street improvements, um, I see we, we're slated at six hundred thousand. Um, what, what have we used that in the past for, um, past projects? And, and, and do we have something in mind for a future project?
I'll like, let Jake answer that.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, council members. So in the past, uh, we typically applying, uh, roughly five hundred thousand dollars for the street improvement projects, and we've been successfully execute those project every year.
It's just any, any street improvement in general?
Any street that within the CDBG areas.
Okay, that would be the, would that be the district? I forgot how you, how you slated that. Was that like District Two or some way it was slated?
I think, Michael, you probably have the, the.
So for street improvements, it's, since it's on an area effort, um, we just need to identify that the street improvements are within low and moderate income neighborhoods and that's, they, um, that's checked by census data as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, one more. I had a question. It always, I always, I don't understand why it's so much, but for the, the CDBG administration, uh, you have it slated a hundred and seventy. Is that typical? Well, I mean, it seems to me like that's such a high number for administration.
Yeah, under CDBG program, so there are federal spending caps. So for public services, there's a max of fifteen percent and that's, that's defined by the CDBG program under HUD regulations. And a max of twenty percent can be allocated towards administration and the remaining goes towards what you see there in the middle call or middle portion of the chart for community development projects.
Have, let me see here. Has it, in the past, has that the whole amount been used for administration?
It has not, no. So that could be an option to reallocate it towards community development projects.
Yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, the next is, um, Councilmember Ho, District Three, if you have any, uh, comments. I shouldn't have comments.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, um, okay, so first of all, I just need a, some reference point. Um, I know that, uh, in the past, we've, I just don't remember, I don't recall how much we received in, uh, CDBG and HUD money. Um, um, but nine fifty and five fifty, about one point five million for this time. Um, is that more or less than previously? It just sounds lower.
So it just varies every year. Um, so for CDBG and homes, specifically since these are federal funds. So, and federal programs, what's appropriate at the congressional level for the CDBG and home will vary. And again, it's off, based off a formula, so it'll fluctuate from year to year depending on how much Congress appropriates for CDBG and home.
No, I know. I know you've said that before, but I was just wondering, like, compared to last year, the last time we received. And I, I'm not going to go into the, the formula, but I'm just wondering, is it more or less?
Um, well, last year was more because more was appropriated at the congressional level to CDBG.
Mm-hmm.
That's why we received a little bit more.
Okay, um, okay, so for me, I, um, I know that, um, our, um, what's really important is that we take care of, uh, affordable housing, um, to acquire, to rehab, to build new, to partner with, you know, um, privates, um, private companies, uh, to build, you know, I know during my time, um, I've approved Del Rosa, the crossings. Those are some of the, uh, you know, um, construction, brand new constructions. And it helps really brighten and beautify our corridors, you know, on Beach Boulevard, um, north, south. And so, um, I would just, you know, for me, it's, is nine hundred, do, do we know at this time, um, what, um, I mean, for me, the priority would go to affordable housing because I haven't seen. Do we have any, um, construction in the works, any, anything in the pipeline uh, that we've been using this money for? Um, I know I have a number of like three hundred or three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars um, annually that we kind of set aside for, for, for this type of, um, construction or for a, affordable housing. I know that's not enough. Like every three years, every four years, we'll be able to accumulate enough money to build, you know, something like Del Rosa, um, you know, but it's, um, or the crossings. But do, do we have anything in the works? And, and also the, the money that we have, I, I hope we put more towards that type of housing because we need, we are in need because of, you know, as you know, the homeless crisis and everybody's kind of uh, complaining about that. So we're all trying to pitch in to do that. So at the top of my mind, and then at the top of my list, needless is that, affordable housing.
I'm glad that you asked that. So, um, back in late November, the city did issue an RFP for project proposals for an affordable housing project. Um, we did receive one response into that RFP, um, process. So at the March eighth council meeting, it's a separate public hearing item that requires a separate plan. So at the, uh, March eighth council meeting, um, we've asked the, um, one proposal that was, um, that submitted a response to our RFP process to come and speak to the council about their proposed project. So that also includes, um, council's, um, previous, um, allocation and authority to commit any available CDBG funding as well as home funding and ARPA funding into the affordable housing project.
Do you have any ideas? Um, and I'm going to ask our city manager as well. How much do we have in that account? I know we are trying to save up a million plus to partner with, uh, you know, a company like that, a private company. What do we have right now?
Are you asking about CDBG and homes specifically or it, because it'll list it there? I'm sorry?
CDBG and homes.
So it'll list it out there in the attachment one for CDBG and home. Those are estimated amounts that we possibly have for affordable housing projects. So for home and our, our RFP, we set aside one point, approximately one point nine million dollars. And then for CDBG, we set aside approximately one point two nine four million for an affordable housing project as well as, um, some ARPA funding that.
Yeah, I was going to say that. Didn't we set aside some ARPA funding?
Yes, and also included in the RFP, we also included additional one-time special allocation of home art funding as well. So cumulatively, that was, um, with all the funding sources that approximated to about seventy million, seven million dollars that the city has available to commit towards an affordable housing project.
Great. I, I love that number. Thank you. And of course, um, my, I, I think all of these things that you've listed here, um, housing needs, community services, um, and, you know, park and rec. Um, I, I would, you know, I think the priority goes for me, my priority goes to affordable housing and then the special needs, uh, assistance to the special needs population. And then, of course, I, I love that Meals on Wheels and then I don't think we've, will ever, and, uh, that kind of program, um, much needed program. But, but thank you so much. Seven million is huge and I'm so glad to hear that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have a, I have a question for you, uh, Michael. Um, the question is, um, is this, has anything to do with the, uh, state requirement that, uh, to build nine thousand units in nine years, in the next nine years?
That's part of, yes. And yes, it's a portion of it, yes, to address our arena allocation of to build, to accommodate building, um, nine thousand units, yes. So it'll help meet us. It'll help, yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right. Uh, next I would like to ask for a public comments, if there's any. I want to open for public comments. Is there any other comment, uh, City, Madam Clerk? All right.
Go ahead.
Please step forward.
Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster watchdog. Thank you for finally giving me the opportunity to provide input regarding the housing and community development needs and priorities for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four annual action plan. It was extremely disappointing to see this council ignore and push back a publicly noticed hearing on this important topic of city, actual city business at the last city council meeting in favor of politically motivated agenda items, trying to rewrite history. So much for the city moving forward, Amy. Looking at the CDBG funding requests attachment, it appears funding requests have again outweighed the estimated available funds for the upcoming year by six hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. Total estimated CDBG funds available for twenty-three, twenty-four are one million thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars, comprised of nine hundred and fifty thousand entitlement funding and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and thirteen carryover funds. And I think staff should maybe address Kimberly Ho's, uh, question in that last year's allocation, as I recall, and I don't have the details, there was a special one-time allocation, something about rental pay. I, I can't remember the nature of it, but it was a one-time thing. It was like, I think, a million or something. So that's not going to happen again. So it is much lower this year because of that, as I recall. Anyway, I will suggest again, as I have in prior hearings, that it would be helpful if staff would provide council with a comprehensive analysis of the funds carried over year to year for the CDBG and home programs as well as historical use of these funds going back a year or two, as you can tell by Councilman Ho's questions. This would help the city council better prioritize funding allocations going forward. At the same time, staff could determine why the funds of a particular allocation were not used and what programs, projects are the best use of these funds and make adjustments if and when necessary. Because the CDBG funding requests exceed the estimated funding available by over six hundred thousand dollars, the street improvement and park project request should be substantially reduced in order to match the estimated, Amy, hello, yeah, estimated allocation. Both of these projects requests have alternative funding sources. There are only two categories. These are the only two categories that should be reduced. Looking at the home funding request attachment, total home funds available for twenty-three, twenty-four are seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and two dollars, comprised of five hundred and fifty thousand dollar entitlement funding and a hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and two dollar, dollars carryover funds. I would like to see these funds applied to a truly affordable housing development for very low and extremely low seniors in our city. Amy, perhaps if you paid attention during these public hearings, you would actually learn what CDBG and home funds are and where they come from and the restrictions on them, if you just did a little bit of your homework. I am excited, as Councilwoman Ho, to hear that we have seven million dollars now in the bank to partner with, uh, a private, uh, developer or nonprofit. But I'm not excited to hear that we put out an RFP, RFP for proposals and we got just one response back. That speaks volume. Nobody wants to do business in this city with this council, okay? And this is a prime opportunity to do something. Yes, it'll help our. And this is a prime opportunity to do something. Yes, it'll help our arena goals, Nam Quan. But more importantly, it's going to help our, our most vulnerable population, seniors on a fixed income. And why did we only get one proposal? We need, as a city, we need to ask ourselves why. This is, uh, other cities are going gangbusters on affordable housing. Like we can't even keep up. And here, we can't even get more than one person to even say that they're interested in joining us to build a very important project like this. So to the city manager, I know we've had recruitment issues with the economic development manager, with the community development director. But those voids are painfully obvious in this city. Without those key positions, experienced individuals that know how to deal with especially affordable housing developers and stuff, get out there and, and get our name on, on the, you know, on the record again, and, and, and get people to want to come to this city and develop. And I don't know what to do other than change this entire council because, other than Carlos and Kimberly Ho. Because again, you have council members intimidating private developers, all right, like Frank Chow. Who, who the heck wants to come here when they're going to be told that they have to fly a certain flag on the property? Just using as an example. And finally, a little off topic, but because I was mentioned in public comments, there were nine or ten speakers that spoke not to the council, but about the public.
Time's up. Is anyone else wishing to speak, um, on a public hearing item at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to speak on the public hearing item at this time? Please raise your hand. Mayor, seeing no one else raising their hand or having submitted, that concludes public hearing.
I now close the public comments. And it is time for the mayors and council member discussions. I will call by district. Uh, you don't have to, um, you don't have to say anything if you don't have anything to discuss. Councilmember West, District One.
No, I think I'm good.
Okay, Councilmember Penzo, District Two.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, um, excited to have this back, have this opportunity to really look at these numbers again, because I think some of these items that we need to look at where we can, you know, subtract or move around because of some of these, um, line items may be, the money's used on some of these line items, like the ones mentioned, like, like street improvements is one. And others were, um, you know, we, we, some of those monies may be more effective in other, other areas. So I look forward to, getting some more, um, input from staff, some of the information that was requested. Uh, so we can really look at these and going forward. Some of these items, as a council member Ho was asking, we do have that, that was along with CDBG and home. Along with the ARPA funding is what we came to that nice number of seven million that, that was about two million more than, than the Westminster Crossing project that our city put in. And we were able to build that. Um, it is sad, uh, as, as resident Terry Rains said, that we don't have more, uh, folks wanting to partner up with us on a, on a, a low-income housing project. I know years ago, uh, there was some, um, companies that were reaching out to us, wanting to partner up with this, us. I don't know what happens to them. Maybe we can, you know, you know, fall back, you know, follow up with them again, uh, and see if they're still on board to do something with us. I know we, we need to do our less, some legwork, you know, try to do as much as we can to try to find a partner. So anyways, thank you, Michael, for your presentation, Adolfo as well. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. District Three, uh, Councilmember Ho.
Thank you very much. Um, I really appreciate, um, Mr. Rains and your comments and, um, you know, regarding the numbers, because I, I really think, um, for someone who doesn't, I, I won't judge, but I'm just saying that for someone of myself, I do care how we, uh, use the funds. So I'd love to, you know, wrap my head around, you know, what funds we have, what we, um, you know, what's been effective. And, uh, I kind of know a little bit now that we, you know, got something in the works and we've got one, uh, developer, um, when we put out an RFP. But other than that, I just kind of, I don't have a good, long memory of, you know, what we've done in the past, what, and so I don't want to repeat, um, for sake of time. But I think it would be good to really look long and hard and see, because the seven million, while I'm really excited, that's a number, it's a huge number that we've never had before. We've always like saving and counting our pennies and just kind of like, you know, putting in our bank account and waiting, waiting for, for us to have enough money. Like usually I'm thinking like in the tune of one point five, two million, and then we get excited. And then we spend it, you know, on, on a project, a good project. And that's what I've seen. So before we squander that, I just think it would be nice, you know, for me personally to, and I think, you know, share that with the council, um, so that we can get excited and contribute, um, you know, effectively, uh, to see, you know, what projects to invest in. And, um, one thing I want to say about, um, how all the cities are being developed around us, so it's like the developers are kind of developing around the city of Westminster. And I've noticed that and I've been told that and I'm kind of, um, confirming that just by seeing how other cities, including Stanton, you know, Stanton, that was like, we never even knew where Stanton was. I, you know, sometimes we go like right past it without knowing that it's Stanton we just passed. But now it's on the map, we're able to see it and it's really a, a very well-developed city. So I think that because we've had this reputation, of course, I'm going to protect my city. I'm always going to try to, and I'm speaking to developers out there, if you want to develop in our city, please, please, or just have a development project, please come and speak to us because we're definitely, um, going to, um, be very development friendly. And we want to make sure we, 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 we are in need of good projects and it will be a good win-win partnership. So, um, I, I was a bit, um, saddened to see that we only have one person. But if there's any way we can get the word out there, I don't know if we are. But, um, we should and, and let people know that whatever it is they think of us, we're different now. And we, we, you know, we'll do everything to accommodate them.
Vice Mayor Wen. All right. And next is, um, casual action. So I, if there's no additional, um, input or comments, I'd like to move to, uh, receive and file.
A second.
Motion is second on the floor. Uh, Madam Clerk, go ahead and call, roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and that is, um, the motion was made by Mayor Nguyen, seconded by, uh, Councilmember Manzo to receive and file, um, the item regarding housing, community development needs and preparation of fiscal year twenty-two-three dash twenty-two-four annual action plan. Councilwoman Fan West.
Uh, I would like to get that report of what the requirement before we take those fun. But I thought you guys would know that, but I would like that report just for us on record. Uh, I vote for today, yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next is a five.
I'm sorry, be- before we go back. So the report that you wanted is just on the requirements of the different programs? Is that where your
Federal funding that we're accepting?
Yeah, so the federal, so I guess it would, so the federal funding that you're accepting, each of those programs have very individual specific requirements, which is why we have
We want, I, we want to know that as a council.
So, so we can provide you when this was first approved before the original consolidated plan to show you what the requirements for those programs are.
Are you asking for a list of eligible activities for both CDBG and home that can possibly
Yeah, both of, uh, those federal funds that we're taking, accepting from the federal. I just want to know, and the public and the resident of Westminster would like to know, what's the string attached? What's attached to that fund?
Okay, we can certainly come back with a list of eligible activities under CDBG and home.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Um, next is five point one, presentation on social media best practices for city officials. So I may have to, may I ask for a staff report, please? If, is that, is that a staff report, um, requested?
I'll, I'll do just a brief introduction on this. Actually, we gave this presentation in, in Placentia and then I approached the city manager about it. Actually, it wasn't, I, I learned for the first time tonight, Terry, that, that you had made some kind of similar presentation. But I, I, I thought it was a valuable, uh, information. I know the council's received a lot of this information. This is not intended, uh, I, I just thought it was helpful information. So that's the reason why it's on the agenda. And I've have Keith Collins here from my office, who did the original presentation to just give the information. I think it's helpful generally also for the public to, to know, uh, the way the rules are right now with respect to social media.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bettenhousen. And good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Keith Collins. I'm one of your several deputy city attorneys. I've worked with the city attorney's office for the past 10 years. And I'm grateful for the opportunity I have to share with you tonight some information that you're probably already aware of. And that will help you in your use of social media as it's become a very prevalent tool many public officials use to interact with members of the public. I have about fifteen minutes worth of slides to show with you. And I'm, I'm also here to answer any questions that you may have about your use of social media and the legal risks that unchecked use of social media could pose to the city. Is my mic not working? Okay. How's that? Sure, I'll move. Okay. So as I mentioned, social media has transformed the ways that many public officials and candidates have, uh, been interacting with the members of the public. While this is a very common occurrence, uh, in today's society, uh, this does expose the city and the elected officials to legal risk if social media use is not done carefully. We can define social media, um, from the statute itself. Internet-based social media platform means an online support service that is open and accessible to the public. Generally means that the public has the ability to access and participate, make comments on the social media platform and engage in that interactive process. So when we talk about social media, this is the common understanding and this is how it's defined in state law. Now, in your use of social media, it is important to avoid potential legal liability for yourselves and if you are functioning as a candidate at the time, to follow some best practices. And that's really the, the, the focus of my presentation today is to just share with you some of the best practices for using social media. Specifically in how you manage content and the users on your personal social media sites. And then also a, a smaller portion of my presentation is how you interact with other members of this body on social media. So let's start with how you manage content and users on official city social media accounts, not your personal accounts, but these are official city social media accounts. Official city social media pages and those that are created by an official to communicate with your constituents are regarded as public forums where First Amendment protections apply. This means that critical comments cannot be deleted and critical users cannot be blocked from commenting. So really the question is, how do we know if a social media site is a personal or campaign social media site or one that's an official organ of the city? There have been several cases recently that have given judges the opportunity to lay out some factors that are used to determine if this is a personal social media account or if it's an official social media account of the city. And I'm going to go through some of these factors with you. This is not an exclusive list. You do not need all of these factors in order for the site to be considered a official site of the city. These are just the general guidelines that will be evaluated in the event that someone is blocked or a comment is deleted and they file a First Amendment claim. The court will then look at whether or not this site is a public forum. And these are the, the factors that they will consider. First, if the page is named after the public official's official title, such as mayor or council member. So you could be operating on a private social media page. But if that page identifies you in your official capacity, that's a factor in favor of a court determining that this is a an official social media site of the city. Also, if the page lists the public official's official city contact information, so your city issued email address. Uh, if the public official is explicitly listed as a public figure, there's a way to identify yourself uh, on these, on several social media platforms as a public official. That's a factor in favor of a court finding that this site is an official site of the city. And then prob- probably the most important factor is the content that is displayed on the page itself. If it primarily contains videos and posts regarding current city issues and the public officials work concerning those issues, it's very likely that a court would consider that as an official social media page of the city. Additionally, if the page contains official letterhead or content regarding votes or issues involving the public official, or if the page contains photos or videos of official business at an official meeting. If generally speaking, the page is used as a tool of governance where communication takes place on official business between members of the public and the public official, that's a factor that weighs heavily in favor of the site being determined an official site of the city. Also, if the page uses government employees and public resources to maintain that page, that's a factor that weighs in favor of it being, uh, considered a city site. Um, and if the page contains an explanation of any official agenda item and/or meeting protocols. So you can, you can see that the closer the content of the page gets to the official work of the public official, the more likely a court would determine that the page is an official site of the city. And I've given you an example here. Supervisor Don Wagner, you can see here, it lists him as a public official towards the left-hand side under his bio and intro. It gives the, uh, address of the county administration offices in Santa Ana. Uh, that's a county phone number and a county issued email address. So, uh, a court looking at this page is going to, is going to consider this page an official county website, an official county social media page, which means that critical comments and social media users should not be blocked based on the content of their comments on this page. Now, what about? So after reviewing all of these factors, if, if we do have someone who has been blocked or a comment that has been deleted, the court will then look at all of these factors. A court could consider, could consider this site a public forum where protections from the First Amendment apply. Users of these forms have First Amendment rights and so their speech cannot be curtailed based on their content. And so these users should not be blocked and their comments should not be deleted. Um, unless those comments violate, you know, a, a content neutral social media policy such as profanity or pornography or commercial posts, those kinds of things that can be blocked, um, legally without impinging on the First Amendment rights of the user. Now, turning to your own personal social media accounts. The courts have also had occasion to consider what factors weigh in favor of it being considered a personal social media site, one that is not an official site of the government. These are social media sites that are established for either campaign purposes or personal purposes. Campaign purposes is not a function of the city. Neither are the social media posts that are purely personal in nature. So those cannot reasonably, reasonably be considered organs of the city and public official, uh, social media sites. Critical comments and users can be regulated on your own personal media, personal social media pages. So what are those factors that lead a court to determine that it's a, a personal social media page? The social media site is a personal or campaign social media site. Where these factors are present. The banner photo on the page is a campaign or a personal photo. The page itself is described as a campaign or a personal page. Often you'll see a campaign social media page that has. Public official for office and it will explicitly identify itself as such. Um, if the page is run by a campaign or a controlled committee, that's indicative that the page is not an official site of the city. Uh, if the email itself associated with the page is a campaign related email. Or a personal email account, not a city address. That's a factor that weighs in favor of it being considered a personal email account, a personal social media page. Uh, if the intro and about sections of the page contain links to a campaign website or the candidate's platform. Or a a personal bio of the individual. And if a majority of the posts, again, we're looking at the content here, if a majority of the posts relate to the public officials campaign. Or the personal activities rather than official city business. And here's an example of a campaign page. This would not be considered an official social media account of the city. Uh, we see a a campaign button, a campaign logo there. We see a link. To uh his uh campaign page. Shaw for schools dot com. Uh, a- any reasonable user of this. Site would consider this a campaign page and not an official. Uh, social media site of the Orange County Board of Education, um, who Mr. Shaw was uh running for office to serve on. So this is an example of a campaign page. This would not be considered a public forum based on the factors that I've I've reviewed. And here's an example of a personal page that would also not be considered a. An official site of the Orange County Board of Education, given the personal photo, the personal contact information, the bio information. These are the type of factors that lead a reasonable user to not consider this an official government website. So once we make the determination on what type of site we're looking at, whether it's a personal slash campaign. Social media page or whether it's an official government site. Then we can determine what type of regulations we can impose on users and content. Uh, if a candidate. Uses a social media site to communicate with uh his or her supporters and then is subsequently elected. Continuing to use that same site where all of those uh personal information was posted. Is risky, given that the candidate is now an elected member of the body. And continuing use of that uh campaign site could pose problems, given that they are now on the official uh body. And regulations could implicate the First Amendment if enough of those factors are present. The better practice at this last bullet point here is for the successful candidate to just invite their followers to follow the can the candidate's official account. Rather than continuing to communicate and interact using the campaign page. And remember, city resources, including staff time, funds, computers and other equipment. Should never be used to promote or populate campaign accounts. So that takes care of my discussion on. How to determine if a personal social media site could be considered a an official social media site. And then the last thing I'd like to discuss with you tonight is how you as members of the city council interact with each other on social media. As you know, members of the city council are subject to the Brown Act. Candidates elected to the city council are also subject to the Brown Act before they take office. This means that generally you as individuals cannot discuss official business with other members outside the context of a properly agendized public meeting. Now, discussions on social media sites that involve. Members of this body can inadvertently violate the Brown Act. Under a recent law that was passed just a couple of years ago. By simply liking or putting in an emoji or somehow commenting and interacting on a post. That deals with official business can be considered a meeting if only two of you comment or interact on that post. It used to be that you needed only three members, that you would need a majority of the members of the body in order to have a meeting. Well, when social media is involved, if only two of you are interacting, that can be a violation of the Brown Act. That would be a meeting. If the topic of the post and the comments and the reactions. Uh, relate to something that's within your official authority. So the good practice is to avoid commenting or liking or expressing some type of reaction to any post on a uh. You know, Westminster buzz page, a Facebook page where the comments can be long and the thread and discussion can contain hundreds of users and posts. And you may not be able to recognize one of your colleagues have already commented on that post. And so if you follow it or if you like that post and somebody on your body has already done that. That's a violation of this new law. So it's a good practice to just simply avoid those. Pages, avoid commenting on those pages. You can certainly read them, um, but commenting on the post. When another member of this body has already done that would violate the Brown Act. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for your detailed information presentation. I know that you've been here from from beginning and sit through the uh oral communication until now. So I appreciate for your time. Uh, at this point here, I would like to open for mayor and council questions uh for the staff or for um the. The mayor, I mean, for the lawyer attorney. So I I will call by district, uh, District One.
I appreciate your, you know, uh slideshow today. Uh, it's great. It's very informative and it's straight to the point and thank you for that information.
Welcome.
Thank you. District Two.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Keith, for um. Putting putting up and staying with us for this long, considering through council, um, public comments is. It took some time, so thank you. And thank you for your presentation. Um. It's a good for us to for have a refresher and try to keep us in line. Um. I just have a question. Um, I mean, it's pure, it's pretty thorough, your presentation. I just have a question. Um, um. Uh, on the site Facebook. If you mentioned if you had some some post that that has city information on it, it can be considered. You know, an official use for, you know, right? An official use uh uh. For um elected official use, right? If there's any kind of post of city events. City uh city uh, you know, ribbing cuttings, coming up events, things of that nature, right?
There's no fine line. And that's why I went through so many of those factors. Uh, on your personal page, you could probably. Post a ribbon cutting or an event that you're attending and invite your neighbors and friends to come. And that probably wouldn't lead a court to determine that that page has now become an official page because you talk about one event that's occurring in the city. But if you talk about some policy matters that you would act on in your capacity as a council member. And you do that routinely on the same site. And your page becomes a vehicle for you to do that regularly and the public comes to expect that. That's a different story, but for you to share information on events that you're attending in the city and encouraging people to go to businesses in the city, those kinds of things. Probably wouldn't rise to the level.
Okay, and if and if it were to rise to that level on the particular site, uh, social media is Facebook. If if a member of the public sends you a friend request. Do you, would you have to accept that friend request if if it's considered if it rises to that level?
So if it rises to the level of an official social media page. Where the city has opened up that page as a forum for public comment. Then you would need to not exclude members of the public based on their content, based on their viewpoint.
I think it wouldn't be the one that city opened up.
No, 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 this is a person.
City opens up, it's clearly open. What we're talking about is a private.
Private, private, yeah.
Personal page that some.
So the question is a friend request. If a member of the.
On a personal page, no, you don't have to accept people. But but I think your question is, what if your personal page crosses the line into an official page?
Correct.
That case, you would not be able to regulate content and users based on their viewpoints and their expresses.
You would have to accept a friend request.
No, but but you wouldn't be able to um censor what they said. I mean, if they're not your friends yet and you. Just said, I'm full, I don't need any more followers, that probably wouldn't violate it. But if you blocked somebody after some critical comments.
Yeah, no, no, it's about, the question is about accepting the friend request.
Yeah, you don't have to accept friends.
Okay, I got it. Oh, thank you. That's all I got. And thank you again for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you, um, Councilwoman West and uh Councilmember Manzo. And now is um Councilmember Hall for the District Three.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, if you don't mind, I'm going to refer, I'm going to keep your. Uh, PowerPoint presentation and I will refer to it uh every now and then to make sure. Because it's a, it's a lot of information. Um, and what's new to me is that the personal page thing and I I think a lot of it was answered earlier. But um my question is, um, what about YouTube? Would would it have the same policy? Because I have, I also have a YouTube uh channel and I was just wondering if we talk about. You know, city news, does that become? Our official YouTube page or YouTube channel and then uh comments and things like that we can't block and. Could you expand?
So a a YouTube channel would fit the definition of an internet based social media platform, given that it is interactive and there are ways for members of the public to comment and. Um, post that type of information. Uh, I I do believe that on YouTube comments can be blocked. Or turned off so that it's just a a video that is um viewable, but there's no interaction taking place. Um, so that would factor into the the discussion. Um, but again, it's it's. All of the factors taken as a whole is is what we're looking at. So if we have maybe one video that mentions city business. Uh, it's probably unlikely that the court would consider that channel to be an official channel of the of the city. Um, if every video contains a detailed discussion on pending matters. Uh, then a court probably, and the site has been opened up for comments and comments are encouraged by the uh by the user. Or the operator of that site, then it is likely that the court would consider that an official city social media site.
Not every single uh YouTube um video, but let's say every fourth one, you know, ten percent, twenty-five percent.
But the 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 case law hasn't gone to that level of specificity. That that's one of the reasons why. Um, it's important to be aware of all of the factors so that US public officials can be aware of. Um, how close you want to get to that line when we don't even know where that line is specifically drawn.
Thank you, thank you.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Uh, just want to say thank you for um coming here to do the presentation. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, next I I'd like to open up for the um any discussion from uh the mayor and also the council members. Is there any? Hearing none?
No, this is just a presentation. There's no action.
Okay, if there is none, then I will uh move to um to receive and file.
There, do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
A second then, a second.
Even file.
There's a motion uh to receive and file and second on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. That motion was made by you and seconded by Councilmember Monzo to receive and file this item. Uh, Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries Mayor five zero.
Thank you, Keith.
Okay, at this point, uh, at this time, I know that uh I have to request from the a few council members that um. If we uh, we don't want to run this too long, the meeting, because it's tiresome when uh, you know, it passed ten o'clock. And also that uh our uh staff need to uh work tomorrow too, so we don't want to run over um. Uh, as a long meeting, so at this point here, I'd like to go ahead and move uh five point one or five point four. Up and if you have any requests to move up uh any item, then then I'll be so, do I have a second for moving the five point four up to um? What next discussion?
A second.
I have. Item five point three, I believe that one is um. Jake knows uh Public Works Director. Uh, I'm how urgent is that? And um, it sounds like it's a, there's some urgency. You're dealing with O C T A. That's important for them to know, yea or nay, right?
It's correct, and they has been um waiting for us to to go through this process, but this tonight is only the resolution to declare the intention of selling the property. Thirty days from now, um, I will assume in the second meeting in March, we will bring the public hearing.
So I would say we need to go to move forward with that just so we can, because the clock needs to start ticking. So um, I would.
Well, we have a a motion. Yeah, is there a motion? Uh, let's let's go with four, five point four. There's a motion uh and a second on the floor. So go ahead and and uh. I think they're taking care of.
Thank you, Mayor. That ma- that motion was to move agenda five point four out of order and next, um, the ma- the motion was made. By Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen. Um, Councilmember, Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Monzo?
Um, before I vote, I'm 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 just confused. Are we are we saying that we don't want to finish the consent calendar and the other items as well, Mayor? Or or just finish.
Let's let's move on with this one first and then we can talk about it.
Because we're still under the old midnight timeline, right?
We haven't done it yet?
No, we haven't done it yet.
We moved it.
Yeah, we we do need to do consent calendar, but we can bring this forward.
Okay, yeah, if you want to bring it forward, I'm fine.
But we do have consent calendar today.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just like we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Councilmember Hall? This is to move agenda item five point four out of order.
We have five point two, we.
This item first and then if you want to make a a a motion to move whatever item, then then we can go next. Um, at this point here, we we are, we are voting for to move the five point four up or not. You can vote yes or no, then you can go ahead and make a motion for the next.
I would vote no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Okay, five point four will move forward. Um, now, now, Councilmember Hall, do you want uh any motion? Uh, do you have one make motion to move any item up or we are going to go with the order?
Well, since we got three, you know, majority, so we'll just move five point four and then after that, I would like to move five. And then after that, five point three. And then the consent calendar.
So you want to move five point three before consent calendar? Is that what you're saying or no?
Um, I would say consent calendar.
Okay, then then that's.
Thank you.
Four from five point four move forward, that's it. Okay, five point four. Okay, item five point four revision to process for placement of agenda items. Stop report, please.
There is, there really is not much of a staff report to this item. Um, a couple of meetings ago, we brought back the um. A revision to the policy, the placement of items for the agenda by council members and. Um, at the last meeting, which I apologize was not there for, but we, there was some discussion regarding the mayor's authority to put an uh to put items on the agenda. To be able to put items on it on the agenda without having a second. And so for clarification purposes, this item is being presented so that we can. Um, explicitly state that the mayor has the ability to place an item on the agenda without a a second person.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to move this one? Uh, Mayor and the city council question uh for staff if there is any. If not, then we can go ahead and I will entertain a motion.
I second it.
No motion?
No motion to move?
A motion to move.
I second it.
Okay, if there's no.
Clarification on the actual motion, please.
We can.
The actual motion is to move forward to approve as recommended by the staff.
Nothing, no recommendation. Um, Mayor, can we, before we vote, can I, can we go in in order of for comments?
Yes, please. I don't think that the Councilmember West have any question about it, right?
Um, you know, I think it's great that uh the city manager and the mayor have the ability to put things on agenda, to call for meetings. I think that's great. Uh, it's so important for us as council to balance idea back and forth with another council member. Before we put on agenda that would save time and resources for our staff. So I think that's great. I um agree with this and I. Uh, would love to move this forward.
Okay, next, Councilmember Manzo.
Mayor, uh, I I don't, I think we're missing the point here. Currently, there is no written policy. That's why, is that not what we're discussing? Is that what is the policy? Is that what is the policy? Isn't that the question? Because right now, there is no written, there's no written policy that states one way or another.
Regarding just-
Regarding the mayor's ability to place, that's what before us. It's, it's, we need to, we need to make sure, make sure that we have a policy that states what, whether the mayor can place an item on the agenda solely. That's what we're discussing, but it seems like we're missing the point here. I don't have a, I mean, originally, you know, this whole placing of the items on the agenda has just been kind of a little bit of a circus. We've gone from one to the other, back to the other, back and forth. So the, the council majority decided to have the councilmembers have two, two members agreeing to put it on there, which that's, that's the council majority, that's, that's what they choose, that's fine. If that's the way you want to go. Originally, I, I, that's not the way I would have done it. Is I think that kind of holds the progress of the each council member being able to place items on the agenda, working with staff. You know, we, we just came from a conference where it specifically talks about working with staff to place stuff on the, on the agenda, you know, doing some research before it is placed on the agenda, make sure that what we can and cannot do, or what we should and should not do, you know, that type of discussion with staff, to work with staff to place items on the agenda, which I think is important. But the more I thought about it, you know, I, I, you know, if it was me, I would go back to the original. Each member can place items on the agenda, but you know, that's just me. Me trying to be a little bit of a, you know, team player here. I started thinking about this a little bit deeper and see, you know, try to see other people's points of views. With the fact that the, the four districts, four councilmembers are elected by district. I mean, there wants to be some separate rules for, for us, that I guess that's okay. The mayor position is elected at, at large, that means the whole city votes for the mayor. If it's so choose to have some special privilege for the mayor. I mean, and I guess there's an argument to said about that, but you know, I personally wouldn't do that. But if that's the council's direction, then just in the sake of being a team player, I guess, you know, you know, I'll agree to that. But the thing that I want to say is that, and this is more of a, you know, an, an agency thing. The question before us is, we do not operate by typicals, we do not operate by verbals. We are a professional government agency that we need to operate by a written policy. And with the answers that I got at, when this came up, was very kind of, I don't know how to say this too nicely, but it wasn't very professional. That we say, oh, it's just, that's how it's typically done. No, that's not that, we, we are a professional government agency. We need to have things written down on policy that tells us what we can and cannot do. So if it's the desire of the, of the council to have the mayor solely be able to place items on the agenda, that's perfectly fine. But write it down, write it in a policy. And we, we follow that policy. It's not really funny, it's not a joke, we're supposed to be, we're a city of a hundred thousand plus people. It's about time that we start acting like it. So put it, write it down, follow the policy. So that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, next, councilmember Ho. If there's any.
Me too, I am really trying to be a team player here. So I, I will go for, for, for this. But of course, I really, we've tried in numerous ways. I just think that what's good for us would be individual councilmember putting an agenda or being able to put agendas on their meetings. But now we're going, going back to the way we, we've tried before. And you know, I'm not going to fight it, but I'm just going to say that I don't like it. And I think, hoping one day we could go back to, you know, having each councilmember being able to put a, place an agenda item on the, on the staff report, I mean, on the meeting, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I have no further comments.
All right. We have the motion and the second on, on the floor for the mayor has an independent right to add item to the agenda.
Can we state exactly how it's gonna, for the record?
Solely, it doesn't have to, doesn't need to have two people to agree to, to add to the agenda. The reason was the mayor can, typical can also call for special meeting. So basically, that's what it is, you know. I want to propose, I want to move to make sure that I have the right to place an item on the agenda. And we have the motion on the floor, we have the second on the floor too.
And I get the, I get the motion, there were some other things in the staff report, just wondering if those would apply or not, which basically are the same rules that would apply to the two councilmembers, but only to the mayor.
Yes.
That request must be made two Thursdays prior to-
Yes, I was going to say that, yeah.
That, I just want to make sure that's incorporated or not, so.
Yes, I modify my motion included all the items that were listed in the background there. Councilmember Wes, are you okay with that? Okay, so we have motion and the second on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, that motion was made by Mayor Nguyen, seconded by councilman, Councilwoman Fan West. And that is to, for the mayor to add the items to agenda without requiring a second councilmember in addition to the items that are listed currently on the agenda as recommended by staff. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
Next, we will follow by consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion followed by a rule call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these, of the, these items unless members of the city council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion or discussion.
Motion to approve consent calendar items?
I second it.
Mr. Mayor, can I pull three point two out?
Oh, okay.
For a later discussion.
Okay.
I have motion to approve all consent calendar items except councilmember Wes, three point two?
Three point two, yeah.
Three point two, yeah.
Three point two?
I want to pull-
Is there any motion to pull any item? If not, I, I'm, I second to the modified motion from councilmember Manzo.
Thank you, that motion was made by councilmember Manzo, seconded by Mayor Nguyen to approve the consent calendar as presented with the exception of item three point two. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
Councilmember Wes, three point two, please.
Three point two? Yeah, I, I just want, I have a question. I think, Erin, would you help us with this, three point two?
Yes, did you have a specific question on one of the items? Or did?
So I guess when I was looking at all the money that comes out of our city every month, I just have a question regarding a couple items. One of them, I know it's small amount, but it is the, the West Grove volleyball. I mean, is our staff being trained on volleyball or what's that volleyball it's all about? Can you explain, Vanessa?
Grove is one of our contract instructors. So through our quarterly brochure, it's one of the classes we offer. So we take registration and then we pay that instructor.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then does instructor pay you guys for using the location?
No, it's their location.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
So the, a portion of it, we keep for overhead and the rest goes to those instructors.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So with that, you want to move?
Could I just ask a quick question, Mayor?
Sure.
All of these receipts are available, just for future reference. Any on any of these? Yeah, so I could, city manager, if I have questions about any of these receipts in the future?
Yes, so any-
I just ask you?
Yes, yes, warrant, yes, with the warrant registers, there's always backup because of auditing purposes. So anytime councilmember and most of you are, are good about this, if you have a question regarding a particular line item, you know, just let me know, let Erin know and we can let you know what you need.
Thank you.
How to answer it.
Thank you.
Okay, so councilmember Wes, you pulled this item, are you okay to?
I have a couple more questions.
Okay, sure.
I know, like, a lot of money or going out for, you know, different contractor and whatnot regarding like even our system of maintenance to, you know, the software. I mean, it's a lot of money that comes out, I just want to know what service they provide. Because I know, you know, sometime I feel like the software we have, we aren't able to do certain things with like planning, like commission or planning department where people are submitting different, you know, application for building. And I feel like we're, there's dropping the ball somewhere around there, you know, in that department. And then also the software. So I just want to make sure that the public know what we're paying, who we paying as a contract and what service they provide for us. And that we hold them accountable on those services.
Absolutely, so each department approves the invoices and they're submitted to finance for payment. And if there's a specific invoice, we can pull the detail on it. And I can look for it right now, but it'll take me a minute to see what each item is. Or if you have a specific one in mind, depending on the department, like Vanessa could speak to it. If it's the, if it's the maintenance on the, our system, or Intergov, or Immunis, we have licensing fees and we have different items that we pay on those. But I'd have to pull the invoice to tell you exactly what it was.
Okay, that'd be perfect if you can, yeah.
Which one is it?
You, you can let us know, can we email you on?
Oh, absolutely, of course, yes.
And then if you can send that to us, I'd agree.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Are you okay to approve this item? Oh, sorry.
I, I, I just, are, are we specifically, so you want all of our? I was like, because it sounds like you're, you're interested about Intergov because we kind of talked about this in our strategic planning workshop, about the program and its functionalities. Are you interested in like what we're paying for just that particular program? Like what the functionalities are? Or do you want like all the IT programs that we have?
Well, the problem is on this record that we have, it just shows basically the description of the company, right? It doesn't say what services that they provide for us. So I think maybe if you guys can add on to that for the next month, that what services that each of them provide for us. And then, of course, we already have the amount that comes out, you know, sometime it's like in the forty two thousand dollars, you know, I mean, three thousand dollars here and there, thirteen thousand here and there.
Like, like which one are we looking for?
What I'm saying is that in this description that we have, we have the vendor's name. We have the description of basically, for example, you know, Westside Maintenance, right? But we don't know what service they do provide for us. So maybe if you can list, just down on the bottom, what services they provide for us that we're paying for.
Well, so we, so we have, so we have a, yeah, so the contract gives you a full description. So if there's a particular company that you're interested in, we can provide you the contract, the public record. The description on these warrant registers are inputted, there's a certain character limit to what you can write in there. So a lot of the scope of work for these contracts are very extensive, especially the, the IT ones, the computer ones. Because it's not just the product, it's also the maintenance, it's also, you know, X, Y, and Z. So unless you're looking for something specific, it's going to be a just, it, it's just going to be a, 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 you know, a lot of just work for a compilation, and I'm not sure what the purpose is.
The purpose is accountability, check and balance, that's all I want. It's because the thing is that money's coming out, I want to know where the money's going and what service they provide, right? So we have right here the description of the company. We have the, you know, the amount, the invoice number, the check, the date and the name of the vendor. But we don't have their services that they provide for us.
But the service is in the description.
It's just a utility charges. One was like a, you know, like look on here, there's maintenance. But what service are they providing for us? I just want to know that, you know, I, I believe the taxpayer would like to know that as well.
So we have, we have, we have, we have a contract log and an agreement log that is a little bit more extensive than this. We can provide something like that, but it's not going to necessarily coincide with your warrant register, which is why we produce a warrant register for every council meeting of what we're paying out. So again, if there's something specific that you're looking for, because we have a lot of agreements, so many agreements. And if you're wanting to see every, what the service is for, our entire staff is going to be looking up agreements and putting this together. It, it's just a lot, it's a lot of work.
So maybe would it be reasonable that every six month, that you guys can provide that scope for us and the public?
No, that, that is why we have, that's why we have processes with agreement approvals, agreements that are a certain amount of money come to the city council. So you see what it is exactly that you are approving. The second part of that too is there are other agreements that I can approve, again, all public, that are presented. And you know, there are, again, there are agreements that are not just services that we pay out, that are not just agreements, but also like service invoices that don't have agreements, but they have invoices instead. So there is just a lot of, a lot of chasing with just different type of services. So it's just really, it's just, it's just imperative that if you're really interested, we can produce something for you, but it's got to be specific, otherwise we're just digging for a bunch of stuff.
So Christine, you're telling me that we cannot provide the taxpayer the check and balance of what services that we're using the taxpayer for?
That is absolutely, that is absolutely not what I'm saying, what I'm absolut-
Well, that's what I'm asking, is, that's what I need.
Okay, we have, everything that we do in a government agency, especially when they're expending money, we have an accountability that we have to follow, right? So there are laws that we have to abide by for auditing purposes. We do an annual audit every year. The things that we're paying out, we just can't arbitrarily pay out, there's always backup. And so we can, through the, through the auditing process, we produce all that backup material to these auditors that we have to, you know, pay and go through this process. And they will make sure that these things that we paid for, these are essentially things that we have contracted for, services that we have. And so again, if you're interested in certain things, we will provide those certain things. But right now, if you're asking for anything and everything, we are going to be spending a lot of time producing those things. That's why public records requests that take a long time, when they're asking for anything and everything, it's the same. I'm sorry, it's the same thing, you know, everything is available, but it's not reasonable to ask for everything at one point.
The reason why I ask that is because the people, the taxpayer already have a bad taste in their mouth regarding government. Government are overspending all the time. So they want check and balance and accountability, and that's my job in the first district to represent them. So my request is that I ask that you provide the services, because if we have nothing to hide, let's do transparency. And the thing is that in our software, we have those information, why is it so hard for us to pull that out and provide that? It's in the software that we use to pay for the software to run our system in the city of Westminster.
So that's a very, so that's a really general statement. So accountability, completely understand, absolutely agree, accountability, transparency. You know, there, there are obviously misconceptions that people have about government. Your, your ask for software, when we scan out, so agreements are sorted in- Your, your ask for software, when we scan out, so agreements are sorted in a place that we have to individually pull those agreements. So someone is going to sit there and pull individual agreements in order to provide them to you, just like we do with anybody else asking the request. There is no catch-all software that basically says, oh, here's the entire log of all the agreements that we have, and here are all the copies of said agreements. And that is, that's the point that I'm trying to make. If there's something specific that you want, that anybody in the public wants, we have a public process for this. We are very open to providing. I will tell you, in the last like seven years that I've been here, we've been more transparent than we were before I got here, and I'm very proud of that. And so to say that we're not, to say that we're not producing what we, you know, what, what we have here, that is a complete misconception. We have the materials here for accountability, people just don't ask. But we have the materials here for people to ask, including yourself, and we are more than happy to produce it. And I appreciate you wanting to have accountability and making government accountable. I know that's your platform, but realistically too, we need to be reasonable about the amount of time that it takes for us to produce these things on top of everything else that is important to this council that you guys want us to do. So, you know, again, I-
Perfect. It sounds like you guys have the system in place. I request for all of it. So you just print it out, you know, that's what we need. We have it in the system, it's in our system.
Because West and city manager, I think that we are talking back and forth, back and forth over and over again. I think that we can, you both schedule and talk about this offline so that we can come to the agreement. And if need to, then we can bring it to the, you know, we can agendize an item to discuss about it. Because we still have a couple of items that need to be discussed.
Yeah, that's perfect.
So is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is that okay with you? Thank you very much. Okay, so at this point here, do you, are you okay to approve this item to move forward?
Yes, except for now, I approve, but I do like that record.
Okay.
Thank you.
The motion is to receive and file, and I second it.
Thank you, Mayor. That motion was made by Councilwoman Van West, seconded by yourself, the mayor, and that is to receive and file agenda item three point two related to warrant register dated February two twenty twenty-three through February fifteen twenty twenty-three. Councilwoman Van West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
Next is five point three, adopt a resolution declaring the city's intent to sell city-owned property adjacent to the-
Five point three, or two, I mean?
Yes.
I, I, we did five point two already, right?
Yeah.
Oh, we did five point one, okay, alright. Sorry about that. Let's go back to five point two. City Westminster, three years strategic plan and updated six-month objectives. Stop report, please.
So just very briefly, want to thank the mayor and city council for having a very engaged. Strategic plan workshop is very successful. And, and of course, we've done, we've done this, this is the third time that we've brought this back to the city council. We started this last year in which the city adopted a three-year strategic plan. And every six months, we update our objectives. So our, our, our strategic plan goals, we have achieving financial stability, developing and implementing specific plans for Little Saigon, the downtown district and the west side, attract, develop and retain well-qualified employees and improving customer service delivery to the community. Those are the four goals that the city council, along with our department heads have, have established as priorities. And so within those goals, we have objectives that are updated every six months. Those are available on the city's website. And of course, we'll be providing monthly updates up until the, until the next six-month workshop. So I just wanted to again, thank the mayor and city council for having a very engaged discussion. You know, we came up with some very, very strong and specific objectives. And of course, you know, as, as before, we will move those forward and keep the community informed.
Well, I want, I want to thank city manager and staff setting up so that we can have a a very important discussion and then set the strategic plan for the next six months. I'm looking forward to, to the plan that we put together. So right now, why don't we have a staff report?
Do we need it? Do we need it?
They don't need a staff report.
We don't need to, huh?
I hear you, she just did it.
Alright.
She just did.
I second it, Mayor, if you go for it.
So any, any other discussion? If not, then is there a motion to, to move forward?
Move to approve?
Yeah, I motioned to move forward. I second it.
Okay, move to approve by customer, right? Okay.
Thank you. That motion was made by council member Ho, seconded by councilman, councilwoman Van West. And that is to adopt the six-month strategic objective matrix for February seventh twenty twenty-three through August first twenty twenty-three. Councilwoman Van West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Before I vote, I just want to say, thank you, city manager and your team. And you know, we didn't have this kind of direction in the past where we had, we were just kind of flying by the seat of our pants. But now with the strategic plan, it really gives us focus on the issues that we need to focus on, and it gives us a sense of direction and, and purpose. So I just want to thank you and, and your team for, for taking us in this direction. So thank you. My, my motion is yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
Okay, now five point three, adopt a resolution declaring the city's intent to sell city-owned property adjacent to the I four five freeway to OCTA for the I four five freeway improvement projects and set a date for a public hearing. It's a request for a staff report.
That's-
Okay, let's do a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. I apologize for my little voice, I have a horrible allergy, but just real quick, so the item before you is the resolution declaring the city intent to sell the city property to OCTA for the four or five freeway improvement project. So the subject properties is on the north side of the freeway. As you can see, is in a blue highlight here, is in between the Milton Avenue and Hafley Street. So just for, kind of give you where it's, it's on the northeast quadrant of the intersection of Westminster Boulevard and Springdale Street. The city owns this property in fee and has been using it for the drainage purpose. So prior to the freeway improvement project, this area was an open flood channel maintained by the city. The channel connects and drains towards the county flood channel. You can see the, the label right there. Here are the top view of the city-owned open channel that, you know, highlighted with the red lines and also some cross-sections to the pictures of the previous channel, and you can see the dirt main and road. And this channel and the main roads, it was secured by the chingling fence and there's no public access to this area. For the freeway improvements, the on and off ramps at this locations, originally OCTA requested to acquire forty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-five square feet of the city-owned property. OCTA performed an appraisal in two thousand eighteen and offered the city full appraised value plus twenty percent for a total amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars, sixty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. Later, further into the design phase, the area were reduced to twenty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-three square feet, which is almost forty percent less than the original area that they requested. OCTA has agreed to pay the city, the full amount even require less properties. In addition, OCTA spent approximately three point three million dollars to construct the underground box covert, replacing the open channel that we had there before. As a result, approximately half an acre of the area above the underground box covert adjacent to Marjorie Rice Park can be added to the park. And this is about twenty-eight percent of parkland can be added to this park for the total of two point three acres. OCTA also agreed to install new irrigation system and grass for this area and the main and road. As you can see, it's shown in black here, for the city to maintain the underground box covert that they constructed. So these are some of the cross-sections that's showing, showing the drainage box covert as well as the main and road above. So OCTA is seeking a permanent fee interest for all the land acquisition related to the freeway improvement project. Per California Government Code thirty-seven four twenty-one, the city may adopt a resolution declaring its intention to sell the property for public use and set a public hearing date. Staff will bring this item back as a public hearing item at the March twenty-second council meeting. So this same process was used in the city of Fountain Valley, you know, for the land acquisition related to the freeway improvement project. If the sale of this subject area to OCTA is approved at the March twenty-second council meeting, staff recommends adding approximately half an acre of new parkland to Marjorie Rice Park. I would like to acknowledge the, our assistant city manager Adolfo Ozeta and Poplar Works team has been working and negotiating with OCTA to bring a lot of improvements, you know, to the city from this project and especially this area. As you can see, they spent million dollars to improve our flood channel as well as, you know, adding more park space to our park. So let's conclude my staff report.
Yeah, I second that to Director Jake Know that I've been, I've been out there when we commemorate opening Marjorie Rice, and he specifically showed me where the area that we are talking about today intend to sell it to OCTA. So I appreciate that you've been working with them along the way. And now I would like to open up for Mayor saying question, for city council question and comments.
Can I, can I ask? So basically, they're spending three point three million to refix that area, the drainage, and then also to supply their irrigation and the extra green in, at Marjorie Rice Park with half an acre. Now, how much are they spending on for the green area that they're gonna, do you know how much that will be for them?
Excuse me, we don't have that information yet because it has not been constructed out there. But there, there was a line item that they supposed to do, to do that area.
I guess my question more is like, are they paying us to, to, how much are they paying us?
They only paying us for the area that they acquire for their on and off ramp improvements. But the improvements for the parkland and a new irrigation system, they will do themselves.
Okay, and how much are they paying us, the city, for that land?
Sixty-eight thousand four hundred dollars.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Keep in mind that all the effort that's going into this project, including Jake's presentation, what he's doing here tonight, it's all fully reimbursed on a month-by-month basis by OCTA. So they're also reimbursing our staff hours, not just the improvements, but also our staff hours.
Yeah, that's amazing, because I sat down with you yesterday, Jake, and you just went in detail to let me know how this is, you know, gonna be built out and how much they're paying us, and then also how many acres we have. So that's, I believe it's a great buy and a great sale. So I think once it go into public hearing in March, I think the people of the first district will agree as well of Marjorie Rice Park. You know, the neighborhood will agree on that as well. Thank you, Jake.
Thank you. Thank you. Customer member Menzo?
Thank you, Mayor. Just had a question. I know that the freeway project has been ongoing. Is there a possibility for an update on the four or five project when where it's at? Like where we, where we are, I know there's a lot of moving parts, but-
Yeah, this, thank you for bringing that up. This is a very big year for the project, twenty twenty-three, all the bridges are supposed to be completed. The first, the first bridge began, I forgot the year now, but Fountain Valley was the first bridge. So there was a commemoration of the beginning of the, of the project with the first demolition. And I just confirmed yesterday that, that they will come to our city to have a similar event to commemorate the last bridge that will be completed, and that's going to happen in twenty twenty-three. So last year, there was a lot of uncertainty with some of the bridges that were early construction, which is why we didn't come to you with information that we thought was going to be not a hundred percent accurate. But we're in a much better position now. I would say April, May, June, around that time, to come back to council and do a comprehensive presentation with OCTA myself, like we've done in the past.
And what's that last bridge? Which bridge is that?
Newland Bridge is the last bridge to open. It's the one that's furthest behind.
Okay, and then on this, would you also come back later on with the description of what's going to be on top of the, the, of these boxes? Is this gonna be grass? And what do you, what do you have in mind there?
Excuse me, for the area that within the, for the box covert?
Yeah.
There's no, not a whole lot of, you know, depth that we can put anything there. So majority is gonna be just grass and irrigation system.
Okay, alright, thank you.
If you recall, if you recall, the park historically had a chain link fence. So now there's a sound wall. So I think that's the biggest enhancement to the community, is the sound wall. But like Jake expressed and explained in his illustration, the fact that we're gaining park space is a really good thing. And a few years back, we actually purchased Cascade Park outside of the freeway from Caltrans. So that became, that was added to our inventory of parks.
That was, but did we buy it or wasn't that gifted to us?
We bought it at a very, very low price from Caltrans as part of our negotiations. So our, our whole philosophy with this, this goes back eighteen years, we've been working on this project, is that we didn't want the project to come through and it look to the, to everybody, oh, that's where the project ended, right? We wanted these improvements to bleed into the community and, and bring a lot of necessary improvements to, to our city. And as you drive up and down the corridor, you see that some of these improvements go out a certain distance. This is just another success story in that, in that.
Well, thank you for all your hard work. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, customer member Ho?
Really, there isn't anything to not like about this project, really, this item, really. You know, I think we'd be foolish to turn it down, you know, because we are getting the full amount for selling half roughly. And what I really liked is that we're gonna be gaining park space, so please reflect that in our park space inventory whenever we have to do that. And so I know box coverts are like the most useful structures in modern construction. So it's really something to look forward to. It's, it's, it's like modernizing our city. And I, you know, when I, when I saw the pictures, I love pictures, you know, it really helps us. I was thinking of Beach and was it Hazard, you know? That's where you see the, some more of those channels. And because they say God doesn't make anymore land, and I know we're running out of space, you know? And so whatever we can, you know, whenever possible to convert and to make space, useful spaces like this. And this is so useful because it's, it's a, it's a natural expansion of our Marjorie Rice Park and, you know, gives us more, more space, kids more space to run around or play. So definitely, I was just thinking that how can we turn this offer down? And OCTA is just, I don't know, I think they're pretty rich, you know, it's like they, I love them, I love them. They've given us like very low interest rates on, on some of our projects. Like when they redid the water, what is it, water tunnel or underground waterworks? And they gave us like really low interest rates. So I really like that. I really like that idea. And there's nothing to, anything negative I can come up with to say about this, so I'm all for it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Just have a one question for you, Jake.
Yes, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I heard that we are going to maintain the tunnel, right? Or OCTA going to do it?
Oh, the, the drainage tunnels, the box covert, we will have to maintain it, it's our facility, not OCTA's.
Alright, so do we have like a figure, how much does this cost to maintain that tunnel?
Excuse me, to be honest with you, the box cover is one of the feature that is really good, that it doesn't require a lot of maintenance. Because all the inlet that go into the box channel has, have a screen. So a lot of large deprees have been stopped at those opening. So with the box covert, you don't have to deal with a lot of maintenance, like for example, like trash being thrown into open channel, graffiti, weed growing. So it's not a whole lot of maintenance requirements for, for that. But we still maintain it a road that on top of the box, we wanna make sure that in case anything happened, we still have access to that. But it's not, it doesn't require an annual maintenance at all because those box will last a long time.
All right, thank you.
All right, at this time, I, I'd like to entertain the motion if there's no other questions.
I motion to approve items A, B, C for approval.
If I may ask one more question, do you know how long this construction is gonna take? I don't think it's mentioned anywhere.
Yeah, that's a good point. The beauty of what we're doing tonight, the box cover, it's already been constructed and.
That's something that's brought in, right? You just kind of.
It is actually, it's built as they go essentially.
I see.
Yeah. And one of the, one of the good things about, I guess, being stuck on a project like the four or five is that we've had an opportunity to see it function during storms. We've had an opportunity to inspect it over several years because it's been installed for several years. And our team is, we requested, and this Twan, our Assistant City Engineer, he requested a video surveillance of, of the tunnel so that we were able to, sorry, the box cover, so that we were able to inspect one foot at a time, the, the condition of it when it was first constructed and then recently. So when we do take it on, like Jake stated, it will have kind of performed and we'll have an opportunity to confirm that it's working the way that it's.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
I will second the custom member Menzo if there is no second yet.
I second it.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Oh, right now.
No, no, so I just. So motion by custom member Menzo and second by Mayor Nguyen.
A fan West. Oh, you're seconding it? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll vote. Yes.
I don't mind if you want to.
The, the motion was made by Councilmember Manzo, seconded by Mayor Nguyen, and that is to adopt a resolution entitled the Resolution of the Mayor and City of Westminster, California, declaring its intent to sell real property to the Orange County Transportation Authority and to set a public hearing date for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three for consideration of protests to the property sale and to consider the addition of approximately half an acre of new parkland to Margie L Rice Park if the sale is approved. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
All right, five point five request to designate the Tep Parade as a city's essential community event. I would have to say this, staff have written a very long and detailed and a very informative report. And I appreciate for, for you spending time to put that together. I'm sure that it took a lot of effort from you guys. So basically, I wanted to, thank you for that. So at this point here, I'd like to ask for staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. I have a quick PowerPoint that I will present to you. If we could put that up on the screen, please. Okay, perfect. All right, some quick background. At your regular meeting on November thirtieth of last year, staff presented a report, report to the mayor and city council requesting direction regarding the two thousand twenty-three parade. Thank you. At that time, no applications had been received from a private parade organizer, which we had seen for probably the last eleven years. The mayor and city council approved staff requests to hold the two thousand twenty-three Tep Parade as a city event. Subsequently, the date for the Tep Parade was the first day of the Lunar New Year, which was Sunday, January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, just a month ago. With only seven weeks to plan the largest event held in the city annually, staff immediately began the process of planning the event. Staff developed a sponsor subject, a parade entry, entry application package, and those were disseminated to a wide range of potential interested parties, including the entire business list holder, past parade participants and sponsors, schools and districts, and a variety of other public agencies. The city council also appointed an ad hoc committee, which comprised of Mayor Nguyen and Councilwoman Fan West, who met several times a week to identify strategies, recruit participants and sponsors, develop the event program, and provide advice on components requiring cultural expertise. For communications, marketing and media, we made diligent efforts to expand our communication by increasing our media presence. We utilize television, radio, newspaper and social media. Local television and radio stations also provided complimentary airtime. And there was a list of that and ad hoc committee members and city staff were able to promote the event using those outlets. Also with our media efforts, we created a media credential program. So we registered the media outlets, which gave us more control over knowing the number of outlets that would be there, how many people, the amount of space they would need. And we were able to hold a pre-event meeting for those that were registered to discuss the general overview of the event, logistics and technical needs for those at the parade that day. I'm happy to say that parade was broadcasted live on the city's website and YouTube channel and W T V, W T V through P C T A, our Public Cable Vision, Public Cable Television Authority. And in less than twenty-four hours, the city's YouTube feed had over twenty thousand views. Because this was a city event, the city footage is now property of the city and can be used in future marketing materials. So we had twenty-three media outlets with over seventy crew members covering the parade. And many of those provided live coverage. K T L A provided a number of live feeds at the morning of the parade and throughout the event. Also, new this year, staff produce a magazine-style program that was disseminated to parade participants, attendees and sponsors. And it's also available on our city's website electronically. And this program guide allowed for expansive opportunities to encourage sponsors and advertisers. Our parade entries, so we had sixty-seven parade entries this year, many of them featuring multiple vehicles, components, walking groups, and included marching band, nonprofit organizations, schools and other performers. Staff also held a pre-event meeting for our parade participants to discuss an event overview, overview, parade logistics, participant safety guidelines and expectations. This was really vital, and I think it's something that with the city leading, really streamlined, streamlined, streamlined the process the day of the event. It really helps out. Float inspections were coordinated by the city's code enforcement division, and that's done the day before. And the check-in process the day of the parade was efficient and participants were generally on time and followed staff directions. Our street closures and traffic impacts. No changes were made to our road closures from the previous years. So that's, that's pretty standard regardless of who's hosting the parade. Traffic control services provided by a private state licensed contractor. Roadways were closed consistent with public notice that was mailed to all residents and residences in the affected area. And unlike previous years, the roadways were closed and reopened on time. We made a big effort to make sure that happened. Public works staff were essential in maintaining traffic control at key intersections and streets along the route and adjacent to the closure areas. Public safety, which is always a key for an event of this magnitude, was provided by, is provided by the Westminster Police Department each year. The city's emergency operations coordinator developed the most comprehensive event action plan ever developed for the parade. In light of the Monterey Park tragedy, public safety played a larger factor than anticipated right before the event. With the city hosting the event, coordination with other law enforcement agencies was more effective. Westminster RACEs, West County CERT, and SWAT operators from Seal Beach provided support for our event. The following agencies also provided police explorers to support traffic control efforts. And there's a number of them. It's really impressive. Placentia, Tustin, Anaheim, Santa Ana, Irvine Cypress, Seal Beach, Costa Mesa, Orange, La Habra, Fountain Valley, Garden Grove and the County Sheriff's Department. Event management and coordination by staff, we had a hundred and fourteen city staff members representing each and every one of our departments that were present that day, taking on roles as event registration, customer service, labor, parade entry coordination, stage and opening ceremony support, media relations, cashiering and other event support as needed. Budget expenditure expenditures and revenues. Initial estimates of the parade cost was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With the parade being held on a Sunday, it increased the cost of labor and some of the other services, and the total amount was higher than expected. Slight adjustments will be made as final invoices are processed by city planners until final record, final reconciliation is processed. So here it lists our expenditures as a hundred and thirty-seven, six oh five, sixty-eight. We had very generous in-kind support and donations totaling over eighteen thousand dollars. Sponsorships was very impressive, given the timeframe, with some seventy thousand five hundred dollars. And our parade entry fees were fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. Sponsors, I'd like to take a moment to recognize these as well. Our community sponsors were Orange County Supervisor Andrew Doe and Midway City Sanitary District. Gold sponsors, Orange County Sanitation District, Orange County Water District, and the Westminster New Vehicle Dealers. Silver sponsors, Honglong Services Inc., Bolsa Row Apartments, Shop Off, Westminster Village Owners, Owners, excuse me, Lee Sandwiches, Estiva Health, the Westminster Police Officers Association, and the Westminster Municipal Employees Association. And our bronze sponsors include the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, Ton Hi Concorde, Garden Grove Unified School District, Clever Care Health Plan, Orbis Public Affairs, Santa Ana College, Bridge Creek Realty and Springdale Corner Property. Here's a breakdown of the total costs and revenue, which total cost was two hundred five thousand two hundred forty-one, which includes some in-kind services. And that's total revenue, which also is reflected in the, it's the one oh four, eight hundred sixty-nine thousand eighty-one. So the total cost to the city was one hundred thousand three hundred seventy-one fifty. So some of the highlights, just wanna touch upon sixty-seven entries, which is really impressive for the timeframe. That is, shows over eight or nineteen hundred estimated participants in the parade. That's a lot of people to corral and coordinate that morning. We estimate the attendance was ten to fifteen thousand per people on viewing the parade route. Like I mentioned, twenty-three media outlets, seventy crew, with, with seventy crew members. And we, we estimate the viewership across all the multiple streaming channels and viewership to be over two hundred and fifty thousand. So with that, should the mayor and city council direct staff to host the two thousand, or the Tep Parade as a city event, it will be incorporated into the city's yearly event schedule and organization will be thoughtfully coordinated. The proposed date for the two thousand twenty-four Tep Parade is Saturday, February tenth, two thousand twenty-four, which again would be the first day of the Lunar New Year's. And then future parade dates can be considered annually. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, provide any details.
I, I have a question for you. Can you go back to the last, the last slide that you just saw? With the date for the next Lunar New Year?
Yes.
With the proposed date for twenty-four, twenty twenty-four Tep event, it's on Saturday again. And it is, we had the problem this year because of the business, we don't want to do it on that day, right?
That was, this, it originally was proposed as Saturday, but that was New Year's Eve date.
Right.
So we, the council decided to move that to Sunday, which is New Year's Day.
So this, so on Saturday, February tenth is the first Lunar New Year, right?
Right.
So the business is still going on. Do we, do we have any problem with that now?
So historically, what we've done is avoided the eve.
Right.
Because that's the big shopping. We've never had it on an eve, and if we did, we learned our lesson.
Okay.
So we consistently never have it on an eve.
Okay.
We've had it after, on the first or several days after that.
Okay. Can you also go back to the media slide? I don't know what slide is that. What's that?
Tell me when to stop.
Okay, right here. It's just that I, I wanna make sure that we are not missing any station that they, they sponsor us. We know that there was the A V A, the A V A station. I know that we, we go on, on that one, and also the V N A TV. They also there. I wanna make sure that, you know, if they look at this and they said, where are we? We don't want to miss that. Okay?
A V A did provide a feed for, for other, it was A V A that provided feed for other channels to be able to plug in, so.
Yeah.
It was A V A, right?
No, V N A.
Oh, it was V N A that.
It was V N A. A V A was for you and Assistant City Manager were on there with me. And I was on there a couple of times too. So anyway. Well, second TV was that too. Yeah, we're little second TV. I'm sorry. Thank you very much for mentioning it. What else? Okay, there's no doubt that, you know, I want to thank city staff and even, and, and our W P D. There was tremendous effort that they put into this. As you know, that it was a short duration of time and even the council, the previous council have doubt about, you know, whether we can pull this one off or not. And we have spent a lot of time talking about it and we finally agree on it. And we put out successfully. So, you know, there's no doubt, you know, a lot of question that whether we can, can do it or not. But we did, we did it and we successfully done for this year for the short duration of time, but I'm sure that it's going to be much better next year. So I want, again, I wanna thank you, staff. Thank you all for your effort. All right. I know that, you know, a number of, a number of you were out there very early in the morning. And, you know, it was cold. It was cold that morning. I, I understand. So.
Emotion?
Is there any other comments?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, all right.
Were you done, Mayor?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just have, I mean, there was, I wanna make sure that that the previous council with, council with Mayor Nguyen and, and also our former mayor Ta and, and customer Doe and all of us were the and we, it was a little bit of a, you know, I don't, I don't say if it was, you know, I don't know. you know, I don't, I don't say if it was, you know, I don't know how to say this.
A long shot?
No, no, I'm saying it, like divisive, divisive issue, you know, in the community. But, you know, the count, all of us, it was a unanimous vote. And I, I know that I, the, the staff, you know, with the time, considering the time constraints, it was going to be a very huge undertaking, but I was very confident that we can pull it off. Because even though it was ran privately in the previous eleven years, right? Staff was always involved, you know, all the way through, right, Mayor? It was always, staff was involved somehow, our police department was always involved. So, I mean, the experience was definitely there. But it still was a huge, huge undertaking. So I want to thank, thank you guys for, for all you do. Just had a question. I know there were a couple of meetings back, there was some talk of a, was it a nonprofit organization, city? That was possibly can do some funding through that organization for the TEP parade? What was that? How would that come into play?
Are you referring to a potential community foundation?
Yes, correct.
Um, that could potentially be a fundraising body for a specific event or event citywide or on a greater scale for supporting the community.
Can I, can I stop? Can I stop right here and ask city attorney? We are not merchandise this item. I don't know. I'm just questioning, okay? Should we discuss about it or?
We, we, the direction, as I understand it, was we were going to look into that and then come back with some options. And then we'll have a detailed discussion. But yes, it could be used for this sort of thing.
Yeah, so that question, the question is, is applicable to this topic? My question?
Well, I suppose to the degree that you're trying to make a decision about whether the city should run the parade or not.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm getting at. I don't have an issue. I was supportive of this in the past. Being a city, a city sanctioned event, I thought it was great. But one of my reasonings was that, as, you know, in the past, there was some not very nice political division that was happening. And, and a couple of our council member, or mayor, council member was a victim of some, some of the ugliness that happens in our city. So I was, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons why I supported it, because I wanted it to be non-political, you know, and, and, and that's what I want. This is a huge event for our community, and it should, politics should not be part of it. This is something that is supposed to bring our community together. It's a community event, and, and, and when you, when you're involved, I mean, I've been involved with it for quite some time. It's, it's a festive time of the year. It brings out, everybody's in a good mood. Everybody's having so much fun seeing anybody, everybody out there. So that's what we want to continue to do, to do that. So I don't like to see any, many political parties coming into play with, in with this event. I just want to bring us some options as far as the possible funding for the event, if it's going to continue to be a city sanctioned event. If you're going to bring that back to us at a later time.
Yeah, so, so definitely. So for fundraising for, for an event of this scale in other cities that have established community foundations, that is a mechanism. Of course, reaching out to sponsors of some of our other events is another, you know, another way to, to, to fundraise as well, reaching out to our business community, as you know, Councilwoman Fan West did a lot of that during, during, during this, this TEP parade planning process. But also, there are organizations or event management programs that, for example, like the Huntington Beach Fourth of July Parade, they actually have a company that goes in and does the fundraising. The city would pay for them, but there are, there are different options of fundraising that, that beats the, you know, what we were doing.
Yeah, that was kind of getting to my next question. My next question was, and I, I mean, I know staff, staff, we did it. I mean, you pulled this off and, and, and great, flying colors, you know, great reviews all across the board. But as other cities do with other events, parades, they have event coordinators? Is that something that we can look at to kind of lighten the burden on staff? To help out in that, in that aspect?
Yes. So, yes, absolutely. So during this planning process, at some point, we did actually contact professional event coordinators and, and management companies. We did use a, we did use one for a component of our event, which is why some of our costs, you know, were, were higher as well. But there, yes, it's absolutely something that would be beneficial because it's essentially having a project manager, you know, for the, for the parade. Obviously, we would have the oversight, but this person would essentially work with all the different vendors and coordinate them. And it, you know, it, it does make sense for that, but, but we will look into that. At this point, some of the companies that we reached out to just could not manage it in the short amount of time.
The time then, time allowed.
Yes.
Okay, and then that was kind of something, well, I mean, I'm sorry for asking these questions, but, but the question I have is now, if now that we know such, if this is approved and we know ahead of time, when do you anticipate the planning process would start, like now that we know way ahead of time?
We're already planning as of like yesterday. No, we're, we're, the TEP, the TEP parade takes a considerable amount of time. Now that we've gone through, you know, planning it in seven and a half weeks, essentially. We would just be starting on it right away because you definitely have to reach out to, to people for sponsorships. You know, we discovered some of the larger corporations that we were trying to reach out to require a very big lead time, you know, some of the casinos that we contacted. And so, you know, again, trying to pinpoint, you know, getting, getting contracts ahead of time for, for some of the vendors, for example, or just starting to advertise for parade entry. Some of those, some of those participants aren't going to be able to commit until closer to the date. But, you know, maybe some of the larger businesses that want to participate, they'll, you know, they'll be locked in. I will say, there are, there were a lot of schools and, and nonprofit groups this time around that are already excited for the next parade. So we're, we already have that momentum going, even, you know, even if it's eleven months out, right? Or twelve months out, since this is in February next year.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ho?
Yes, yes, I, and I support this. And I've, like I said, six, seven years ago, when I first started, I always felt that, I felt that this is, this should be a city, city event. Because I've seen the politics, I've seen the burden on staff. When, there's always going to be burden on staff, but when you have to coordinate with a third party, you've expressed, and I didn't, you didn't even have to express, but I was, I sat in on some of those meetings and very, very stressful meetings. And so I feel that this is something that we already got started this year. And the only thing I like to add is that, you know, see how you can, because you're now given a whole year, right, eleven, twelve months. See how you can streamline, you can do things more professionally, like use professional coordinator. But I can tell you, I think the mayor might agree with me when we talk about using an outside agency to raise funds because this is most likely going to be supported by Vietnamese, you know, like maybe small businesses, maybe you, we could use, you know, we could use members of this city council or people in our Vietnamese community to help raise funds. But then we can use the professional companies to help raise funds by going to the large corporations. Because I see that we, we lack, of course, and understandably, we didn't have enough time. But, you know, those are, are that type of money or funds from those companies we're, we kind of walk away from because we didn't have enough time to plan, understandably. So I want to also, you know, want to echo Councilmember Manzo's sentiment regarding, you know, taking the politic out of it. Because that was the whole reason why I was in support of, I mean, this is part of the reason. I mean, there was a big incentive because previously our council not treated well by a third party when we, you know, and et cetera, et cetera. So I just think that if we continue to look and strive to take politic out of the TEP parade, that will be great. So now, I don't want that to be another thing that's going to divide our council. Okay? And, and then just having not the same people on the ad hoc committee because that you don't want to like have the same people controlling the TEP parade. So that's just my general suggestion. And the other thing is, looking at the personnel for the day of the event, I, without a prior, I wouldn't have anything to compare to. But I can say that for sure, we need to make full use of volunteers. Like if we can tap whatever Eagle Scout, I mean, just scouts in general, Scouts of America, whatever, because now you have plenty of time to approach, approach them. And now we don't have COVID, or, you know, next year, hopefully, we'll have that to deal with. And then you'll be able to, you know, solicit early and get them to get excited now that you, like you said, we have a momentum. And that's something that we could, the help we could use to, to help drive that, that financial burden down on personnel. So other than that, I'd like to see this parade pay for itself next year. So, you know, when, when I, when we have a full year of planning, the only way it wouldn't pay for itself is if we slack or we don't hop right on it. And, and I think that, that would be, that would be fair, you know, to our community, to our taxpayers, if we make sure we commit, make plans, make budget, and, and every month got to recheck our, our efforts. And if we have to do whatever we need to do to step up, to make sure, to ensure that next year, the TEP parade will pay for itself. And hopefully, we'll be able to have extra set aside for the following year or whatever donations that we can donate to nonprofits or back, invest back into our community. So that's what I have to say. But it is a good thing for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that there's no doubt that this is a very successful event. I have said it before, you know, this with the very short period of time and staff and the ad hoc committee people have put together this successful event. As, I'm glad that we have that. But on top of the successful event, I have some suggestion. First, I pay attention of traffic control. So I don't know if you guys pay attention to that. But when we go down the road to Bousha and Bishop, there's no way to go. So I think it's supposed to, you know, lead us back to where we started. So we can get off there and go back to the, the what? The stage or, you know, whatever that we want to, to get off. So my driver, Danny, he has a problem with, he doesn't know where to go. So he has to move the barricaded area and then he has to cross over the parking of one of the school at that corner. So I think we should coordinate that better, you know, next time. And the second thing is the VIP section. I, let's see. We have so many vacancy right there, okay? Before I spoke to Mr. Mayor and I found out about the price that we set on for the ticket, I told him that the ticket is a little bit high. So, so the result is, you know, nobody buy that, those tickets. So we should pay attention to that, set the, the right price for the tickets. And the last thing is, if you pay attention on the ribbon cutting event where Councilman Ted from Fountain Valley, he snicked it to cut, you know, the, cut the ribbon. So I, I don't know if you guys have some kind of mechanism to spend, to, to prevent that from happening, you know, next time. So, okay, so that's, that's pretty much it.
We basically have, thank you very much.
May, may I just add something really quick? I forgot.
I haven't speak yet. I just motioned.
Hold on, there's one more.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Could I?
I know you motioned.
Yeah, I have some, something to add on. The proposed February tenth, I think that's, we should move it to February eleventh.
Right now, right now, we are not voting on that, right? We, it's just a report.
Sundays are more expensive.
You, you can, you can come back. Yeah, you can come back. The day, you can, you can vote in a day today if you wanted to. It's, it's really both.
I propose February eleventh.
February.
More people off work, right? More people off work, right? I agree with you on that.
Yeah.
If I may, okay, yes. You know, I made a note, if you add the banners and council car signs to the parade of car, parade car rentals for, for council vehicles, that totals like four thousand dollars. I just think it's like average of four, a thousand per car. I find that to be a bit gouty. So I think that we just need to make sure we watch our spending. I, it shouldn't be a thousand dollars a car.
So, no, so the so the banners, banners and council car signs, so that actually includes the stage banners and the sponsorship banners. So it's not banners just, it's not, so the
Banners for like stage.
The, the giant one that was on the stage, that's part of the cost. All the sponsors that were the higher, higher level sponsors also receive banners, so that was part of it. I believe the one that said City Westminster TEP Parade, that was at the opening of the parade route, that was also part of the cost too. So it's all the banners and then council car signs.
What if next year I just put everybody in my car and we all go together?
I put in my car. I drove my Jeep, so it doesn't cost the city any money.
Yeah, and I, I mean, if we have, and then I, I just wanted to say that, you know, we mentioned that it's a special event grant program. Do you think that, is there any grant that we could apply for cultural, this is a cultural fair? Anything, Mr. Assistant City Master?
We will look into it. It's hard sometimes with special events and grants, but we'll definitely look into it.
If you have that much time, if it's not for next year, it could be for the year after. Thank you.
We have five minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, let me, let me, my turn first, okay, and I'll come back to you. I, I can't thank you enough for, you know, for the effort that the, the staff, you know, for the effort that you put in. Especially thanks to city manager and assistant city manager and also director for community. Not, I, I know that you guys work day and night for that. So again, thank you very much for that. And now I'll go back to Councilwoman West. I know that you have motioned that too, right?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't get a chance to speak on this motion. I just want to thank your staff for doing this, but I know with Councilmember Menzo concerned about how we're going to get the money with the foundation that I have put on the policy is to create mainly for the TEP parade. I have put on the policy is to create mainly for the Tep Parade and of course for the senior citizen and the youth mentorship. And of course, you guys are going to come back with that. And the sooner we get that foundation going, the sooner we can ask money from donors, business owner, because they want a tax write-off. So this is, this will help offset the price for sure. So I just want to motion to move forward now.
All right, there's a motion and second on the floor. Pro call vote please.
Just to be clear, this is a motion that to approve your request to designate the Tep Parade as a city sanctioned event. And I don't know, did you set a date for it or not? We're just gonna.
Oh, yes, the the date is that.
We set it later.
You can, you can set it, you can set it later. It's really up to you. If you wanted to set it now, if you if you set it now, then we're able to like plan. The sooner the better. But I will say that one of the biggest draws of the parade and and why it was successful with a lot of the drives. So Asian Garden Mall does have a firecracker show that takes place on the first day of the Lunar New Year. And what we saw this year by having it on the same day as their firecracker show, it just became an all encompassing experience for people. And so I feel like if you move it to the Sunday, you may not get the same kind of draw. And of course, our costs would be increased. So that's just my suggestion on it.
City manager, may I add one more thing? It has to do with part school participation. Some school districts have, I don't know if it's a written policy or unwritten policy, but they they don't participate in these types of events on Sundays. For example, Huntington Beach Union High School District, none of their schools were represented because it was on a Sunday. And I know that Vanessa encountered the same struggle when she reached out to other districts, you know, near us and outside of the region as well.
If we continue, I know it's midnight. So I'd like to make a motion to continue this meeting until twelve fifteen.
Yes, I second it.
We, I think we can finish this agenda item.
We we still, we finished that and we still have the
Council comments.
Council comments.
Yes.
So
Let's finish this item and we can.
Okay, that's okay. But right now we have a motion and we have a second on the floor. So.
Before Councilmember West, do you agree on February tenth?
Yeah, that's fine, a date, so then they can start.
All right.
Why don't we vote on that before we discuss further, further discuss about this?
Okay.
Yeah, we're motioned for.
Motion to continue past midnight to twelve fifteen. That's the motion that's on the floor right now.
Yes.
There was a second to that too.
I'll second it.
No, I already seconded it. Sorry.
Yeah, so the the motion was made by the mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Fan West, and that is to continue the meeting past midnight until twelve fifteen AM. Council, Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
So I know that there are a motion and and second, but the thing is, I want to go back to you. What you said there, you know, Sunday is probably a better day. But at the same time, I know that on the first day of the new year is a lot of organizations from the Vietnamese standpoint, because of cultural, they don't, they don't want to participate in during the first day of the Lunar New Year, because they have families getting together and everything. Some of them, you know, I I don't want to go into detail, but that's that's another drawback, that if we do it on the the first day of the new year. So we can consider that too. I don't know what that you are ready to make a position, I mean.
May we just keep the date on the tenth and then we'll go back? So at least they have a head start on a a target, you know, a date. And then once we bring it back, we can change the date to whatever you guys want, as we discussed later on. And then also, we have an ad hoc on this as well, committee that we need to appoint later as well.
Are you okay with that, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'm okay with with that. But one of the thing that why I propose to change the day because we, according to our belief, you know, the Vietnamese people, they they don't want to go out on the first day of the Lunar New Year because they believe that, you know, it's going to bring them bad luck. So so if we we have the event on the second day of the Lunar New Year and there's a lot of, there's a lot more people to participate.
Yeah, I I got your point. I get your point. And I I see it clearly this year.
Thank you, Ado for, you know, for your suggestion.
Absolutely.
So so since the ad hoc committee is not on this, how about, how about we just, we 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 know we're going to put it together. We don't need the date right now. And at the next meeting, when you decide, when we come back for appointment of the ad hoc committee, you guys can also pick the date as well. And then we, so you don't have to pick a date tonight. Just, it's a city event, next meeting.
Is that okay with you, Vice Mayor? Yeah, okay. All right. So we have a motion on the floor and motion and second on the floor.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. That that motion was made by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Fan West, seconded by Councilmember Manzo, and that is to designate the Tep Parade as a city sanctioned event and staff will come back with the additional information.
Did I motion?
Say that again?
I think you you're.
The motion was to approve.
Yeah.
It was to approve.
Yes.
Councilmember West made that motion.
Second it, right?
Without a date, that was the original.
And that's late in the night. Go ahead.
Hey, we're good.
Yeah.
Actually morning. Go ahead.
Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries Mayor five zero.
All right, thank you. Next is comments from the city council and agency members, including A B one, two, three, four report. Let's start with Councilmember West, District One.
You know what? I didn't do the A B one, two, three, four. I did that before. So now I'm just reporting on active shooting, because that's what I went to. What I learned is very important during active shooting is that we have to make sure our police, we have to get out of the way as the council and mayor and let our police do their job and get to the bottom of the crime. And then for us, as mayor and council, is our job is to lead the healing process and to help the community to heal during this time and not talk about police issues that we don't know yet. So I think it's so important for us as the face of the city that we be careful what we put out there on social media, what we say and text message as well. Just waiting, you know, for everything to settle down with the information from our police. And then also the sheriff, they say that if there is an active shooting, they're able to do it live, you know, with television and radio as well, notifying, you know, the family to what's going on in the city and and everything. So that's really good. Also, the other concerns, concern is that most likely what we'll be facing is more of a cyber attack than, you know, active shooting. It's rare. But when it does, it's important to be trained on. And then also with school, for them to annually train on lockdown, you know, what the process is like, so they're aware. So when it does happen, they they know it, you know, it's like breathing. So I think it's important knowing those information. And also, we have a great system with our W P D that they have to make sure to protect us and the resident of Westminster and the businesses when bad things happen. So we thank you, our W P D, for having a great plan for the city. And also, I just want to remind my constituent, my constituent District One that you guys voted for me to represent you and to bring trust back to the government identity. So I'm going to always be transparent and I'm going to always fight for you guys and always, you know, get the information that you need and also have the meet and greet to inform you on different things that I'm doing in the city and also other safety and homelessness and public safety that you guys will be informed on. So that's my promise to you for the next four years. And thank you so much for believing me and supporting me. And thank you for the staff working so hard to make sure that our city keeps running. So thank you, guys. I appreciate that.
Before we move on, I I just want to make sure that we have only seven minutes left. So I would appreciate if you can brief, be brief with your comments so that we all here can can report, you know, for A B one to three. So, Councilmember Manzo?
Yeah, keeping it brief as I can. Just want to just share a heart and my condolences to the Roberts family, the loss of our chief. Ron Roberts was tragic when he's enjoying retirement, you know, you don't expect, you expect him to live a long and healthy life and enjoy all his, the fruits of his labor. And that's very tragic that that happened to him. Second, I want to thank staff, everybody involved, you know, with the the huge undertaking of, you know, the distribution of the grocery gift gift card. Thank you for that. That was huge. So thank you very much. Last, just just thank the staff in general for all your help, thank council, council for making an effort for us to come some sort of agreement and trying to work with, work with each other and, you know, run that meeting a little smoother. So thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Ho?
Yes. I won't repeat what's already been said, but I just want to say that if I could ask staff to, you know, be assertive or step up when you, when we, you know, as a council, I won't point to anybody, but when we have a continuance on the agenda, before we cancel or move it to another day, whatever, you know, make sure you inform us of the hardship or the impact. And because we do have some new people on the council, because, you know, I'm just talking about the four point one item that was a public hearing, because I don't think they realized that it, you know, the public came and then we had, they had to be notified and then re notified. And so those things would be appreciated if you just step up and just let us know. Thank you. Other than that, I think I'm just very happy to hear that we're, I mean, I have to to see that we're getting so much done today and I'll make it brief. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
I just want to say thank you to staff. That's it.
Wow, thank you. You still give me five minutes. All right. Again, thank you all for being here until this minute here. I I know staff have to go back to work tomorrow. You know, I appreciate for your time. Hopefully, that next meeting, next meeting is going to be at six o'clock, right? It's going to be end at ten o'clock. So if we have to extend, so it it would be not much after ten. I hope for for that. So I don't have much to say beside what I already said. I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of retired OSF A Ron Roberts, who passed away as reported by the city clerk to about a city manager away two weeks ago. So I, again, our thoughts and prayers with the family, with his family. The next regular meeting will be held on Wednesday, March eight, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Missing adjourn.